Stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh Satan, you see by the dawn's earthly light, once so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming. Whose bright stars and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the red larks we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rockets ran where the first he gave their aim, they flew through the night that our flag was still there. Oh Satan, that star-spangled banner yet raised, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Please be seated. Okay, roll call.
Charon Sarrow.
Colin Conklin present.
Sally Hunt.
Kristi Chong.
Lashaka Moore. Okay, any special announcements? We'll move on to Board Member Liaison Updates. Would you like to start, Ms. Sarrow?
Yep, I got it. Flagler Tobacco Prevention Partnership had met, and the group is actually working with the county, the city of Palm Coast, the city of Benel, Flagler Beach, to develop regulations to limit locations of smoke and vape shops. And this is as a result of the vape and smoke shop right across from FPC. It's been ongoing, so that's the next battle that they're taking on. Focus on Flagler Youth Coalition has the Teen Town Summit set for April 27th here in this building from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. And it's a free event for middle school and high school students. There'll be workshops on alcohol literacy, your social media footprint, fentanyl, one pill can kill, as well as experiencing the DUI teen go-karts, which was a huge success last year. Where the kids actually get to put goggles on that show the different levels of being intoxicated and drive a go-kart. So, and it's taken care of by the Flagler County Sheriff's Office. So that's kind of a neat thing to do. For additional information, you can contact myself, or you can just look for the Raise Your Voice Teen Summit online at Eventbrite. That's it.
Just with Chair, I don't know, those of you who went to the Ed Foundation Golf Tournament, it was a blast. It was, it was great. It was amazing to see how many community partners come out to support that event. And I think they raised over $50,000 in that day, so congratulations Theresa Rizzo, her whole team. That was just, it was a lot of fun, good time. FPC's got their, the Future Problem Solvers did really well, and basically they've got the sports physicals coming up. And that's really it. FSBA put forward a legislative debrief. You want to attend that, you can sign up for it. It's usually pretty good, nice overview. That's really it.
Yeah. We will be providing a legislative debrief. The Sarah Browners will come and make, and also provide that to the board.
It was nice to see them too at the golf tournament.
Yes.
It was great.
Yep, and I, I don't have anything to share, other than this Thursday is the Renefire SAC meeting, and so I will certainly bring anything noteworthy to the next meeting from that.
I also don't have any updates today.
Okay, so Flagler Auditorium Scholarship Report. The committee there met and have identified five recipients for scholarships out of 10 that applied. The students are going to be notified here in May, so we'll keep that quiet for now, but we're very excited and proud of those recipients for getting those scholarships and earning them. Also, the Chamber, the Junior Chamber of Commerce is going to be having a workshop called titled Becoming an Entrepreneur. And it's really focused on helping younger students understand what it looks like to enter into entrepreneurial shit. And by some of our Flagler School students that have actually done that after graduation. So I think that'll be a very informative workshop. They're also having a post-session briefing with Speaker Renner and Senator Hudson, and also the Ed Foundation. That was a wonderful event for, for all that wanted to support education in our classrooms and careers. And yes, it did raise over 50,000, and it was really great to see a lot of our staff participate in that as well. It was great playing golf with all of you. And that would conclude my liaison updates for today. So, do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
Yes. I request that we adjust the order of operational services.
Okay.
So, one, moving operational services up to after public comment, that entire section up.
Okay.
And that we first start with the utility easement.
Okay.
Then we move on to our friends from Advent Health for our ECG policy and conversation, and then a .03 student generation rate.
Very good. We will make those changes. So, you said after public comment, right?
After public comment.
All right, so we will move on to public comment. Do we have anybody sign up for public comment?
No, we didn't.
Okay. Would anybody like to come forward and add?
Of course. You're permissioned, that's okay. Welcome. Tell the truth, okay? Thank you very much. Put my glasses. I'm trying to read as fast as I can, okay? Well, I gotta speed very. Okay. Okay, excuse me. By the way, here's my, my blood test, okay? My report. There's a reason for this craziness, okay? Thank you, now. Okay. If I give you a fish you eat one day, if I teach you how to fish, you eat a lifetime. If you plan to fail, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. My name is Rufero Yeras, living in Palm Coast for 25 years and counting. I'm going to be transparent as I speak, and there's a reason why you want to be transparent. I'm usually very humble. High school dropout, joined the Navy, United States Navy, at 16-years-old acquired a GD after the Navy. Here we go, God bless America, okay? And now, really, I went to school, got the GI Bill, the wrestling history. I'm not going to go into all the details, okay? Now, I would like to thank two lovely ladies here in front of me, who have always had both their feet on the ground, in their hearts, with the community of Palm Coast, seniors, military, and general population. You know who you are, may God bless you, for all you have done and all you will continue to do, okay? Question, has this committee, excuse my language, I'm loud, I can't help it. I don't, I didn't bring my pacemaker, I didn't bring my, my oxygen mask, okay? Don't get, I don't need it. I'm getting nervous, sir. Has this committee ever done a, a, done a needs assessment as to the real needs of the population? No, no, why not? Why can't you work with us? After all, we the people, we the people, as in the Constitution, we the people pay all the taxes and your salary. Let's work together, what is the problem? Have you evaluated the medicinal effects of the, of the medical advantages, psychological effects, motor coordination, cognitive retention, with respect to the physical advantages as it relates to swimming, treadmill, and weightlifting? No. Sounds like a medical thesis here. This pioneer, Ruffero, so Palm Coast wants to need a pacemaker, a fibula, so forth and so on. Guess what? No pacemaker, no fibula, why? It's all your fault. It's all your fault. You know why it's your fault? Because you kept the pool open. That's why it's your fault. I can't afford a cane, I can't afford a walker, I can't even afford a wheelchair. Son of a gun, what have I done wrong? 85 years old, I dropped down, I give you 60 right now. I'm sorry. I'm here not for me, but for we the people. Help seniors, military, and the, and the general public to achieve good health. They are the true Americans that have done the heavy lifting. I could tell you stories about these Americans on the, on the pool there, you could die, you think I'm lying to you? Another scenario, mama and Papa work. Okay, Papa gets got to work the distance away, he's not going to work in Palm Coast to make money. So Papa comes to grass on Saturday, mommy cleans the house. Okay mommy and daddy, they want to go to the pool at 3:00, guess what? The pool is closed.
We have three, the three minutes.
Excuse me, sir, excuse me, please. Excuse, I know you got time, I know, I know. But I got to say too.
Just please wrap up your comments.
Now, okay, now, okay? But I'm getting to the end of the video there, okay? Please, just, I apologize. I apologize, I'm a fighter, I can't help it, okay? Thank you, but listen, I hold due respect, okay? Now, so Papa can't go to the pool because it's closed. Okay honey, we're gonna go tomorrow morning. Bingo, closed again. Okay now. Okay. Don't we count, as people of Palm Coast, always increase the demand of the brand? Now we get into a different verbiage here. Two weeks, a, a, a two-week free pass for the people who do not have pools, okay? Activities such as birthday parties, Veterans Day, Mother's Day, Father's Day, snack bar, ice cream, call out for pizza, most important. Why do you need the pool to be heated with propane? Shame on you, you don't need that. What you do is you get solar collectors, and now you got the free office, working for free, and whatever you don't sell, or whatever, if you oversell, guess what? You sell it to Flagler, for the, the, the electrical, the.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry when I tell the truth. If I offended someone, I truly apologize. But you know what? I come a long way, hard way, okay? Thank you. Thank you for your, 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 your.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm here alone, I don't know why I'm here alone. This place should be full.
Sir, thank you.
We're done.
We gave you the extra time, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other one that would like to comment, public comment today? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we will close the comment and move on to operational services, and we will start with the utility easement at Old Kings Elementary. Mr. Friedman.
Good afternoon, Board, Chair, Burry, Superintendent Moore. As you are aware, we've been working with our developer to provide an easement at Old Kings. We talked about this meeting on the 2nd of April, I believe. I do have Chris Wilson, our easement attorney, is on Google Meet with us. And we also have Jared Trent here from the developer, both who will be able to answer any questions that the board might have. At the 2nd of April meeting, there were some questions the board had on the dates for this easement, the amount of the easement, and then the type of construction. The two attorneys and staff have worked together. We have worked out the most, one of the most important things was the type of construction. I believe at the 2nd April meeting, we were talking about an open cut type of construction. The contractor has, we met with the contractor on site, and they are going to do a jack and bore method, which means they have one entry on the north end, and then another entry on the south end of our easement. So it's very, it's less evasive than an open cut, opening up our parking lot. We looked at the dates that we would be able to do this, and the district feel that the dates for the, starting on the 1st of June, going through the 31st of July, would be the best for the school district. And so we added that into the construction easement that you see on board docs. So it could either be this summer, or it could be next summer. The timeframe that it takes to do the jack and bore is approximately a week to two weeks. So that gives them an opportunity of, you know, eight weeks to get this done over the summertime. And then the last thing that we looked at was the amount, or how do we come to an agreement? And the developer did an appraisal of our property, and there was a fair market value based upon a percentage of the land that was going to be used. And the amount that they have agreed with, and our attorney agreed with, was 114,000, that the developer would pay for the use of this easement. Eventually, as the contract states, this easement would eventually go over to the city of Palm Coast, who would then have the maintenance requirements of easement. So pending your questions, I have both attorneys here to answer any questions that you might have, or if you have questions for me.
I have a bunch today.
Okay.
You mentioned maintenance. What kind of maintenance do you think this will need over the years? Or do we need to worry about sinkholes?
I don't think we need to worry about sinkholes. It's, it's like any other line that, utilities line that is, that is put in. If there's any maintenance, if there was a break in the line, then they would have to come in there and take care of that. But, you know, I don't foresee that happening. I mean, there are underground utilities all over the county.
Do you think this would, would affect our property value any time in the future, if we, say we sold Old Kings to build a bigger elementary school, or?
Yeah. I'm not sure about that. I don't know, Chris, did you hear that question?
So, I think the question was, will it affect the property value?
Correct.
I mean, you're, I guess you're being paid for that now, and, and yes, in any future sale, it would take into account that this is there, but it's within the first 30 feet of the property, so probably within the setback. And, and it would be there and have to be dealt, dealt with if you redevelop the property in the future.
Yeah, just something to keep in mind. Let me see what else. How come the line's not being ran in the right of way, like where the road is? Or is it going to be close to that anyway?
It's, and I don't know if Jared can chime in on that, but I know there's, the easement is where, it's, it's actually coming from the north side of Highway 100, and it's coming in right where that the north entrance is. And as far as coming down the right of way of the, of the road, in the middle of the road, is that what you're asking? That would be more evasive than alongside of an easement. We did ask on, about the other side, why aren't they coming in on the other side? And the answer that we got from the contractor was that they have made repeated efforts to try to contact, it's a foreign owner for several of the properties along that route, and they've been very unsuccessful in communicating anything with them, so.
And I'm assuming they have to get easement all the way down Old Kings, right?
I would assume so, yeah.
Ironically, I used to live in Eagle Lakes, which is, I realized is what Radiance is. And it says, where is it? It's like sanitary sewer line, so is it just sewer lines, or will it improve their water? Because the water is very bad.
Right, it's sewer, and I believe there's water lines.
It's reclaim, reclaim water and sanitary sewer.
So it's not like shower and drinking water?
No.
No, ma'am.
I guess that's pretty much it for my questions. Anybody else?
I have a couple, but I can wait.
Go right ahead.
Dave, if you can just clarify the arrangement, because in some ways it sounds like we're essentially selling it, but is Palm Coast taking over, like we still are gonna, we still own this, but Palm Coast is taking over the maintenance of it? Like, can you clarify the arrangement?
I'm gonna let Chris.
Chris, can you clarify the arrangement after this is done? Do we still own, we still own this piece of the property?
Yes, you will own it. You are selling, an easement is a part of the, a fee simple ownership of property is everything that comes with property. And when you sell an easement, you're selling one piece of the bundle, bundle of sticks. So you're selling them the right to install these two lines in your property, and then maintain them in perpetuity. And you're being paid for that today.
Okay.
In the future, for your question about what happens in the future, it's perpetual but non-exclusive easement. So you can do everything else within this easement area that doesn't conflict with those lines. So you have white poles, and you have drive aisles, and parking spaces, and all those things can continue to be there because they don't conflict with the other use. And so it's a perpetual but non-exclusive easement that you are selling to developer and then future Palm Coast. And Palm Coast will take over once it's developed, and then they'll be the maintenance entity going forward.
Great points, thank you for sharing. My only other thing is, the dates, June 1st to July 31st, are obviously awesome. Is there any kind of penalty built in that if they, you know, in the spirit of things happen? If, you know, if they're up against something where there's no skin in it for them, right? Like if they go a month past, then why would they not, right? If it's better for their business? So I guess my question is for our sake, like is there some kind of penalty built in to deter them from going past that July 31st date?
Yeah. I guess it would be, would they be in breach, and we'd go for an injunction to stop them? There's, they're only permitted under the easement rights to do the work between those two dates.
So that is, that is what they are, they are given that timeline, and so that is a hard date, that July 31st, is a, like?
Yes.
They can't just go past it?
Well, I mean, you make a good point. They, I guess they could, but then we would be telling them they're in default. And so they have to stop.
And so that's really been, I think, the source of my comments thus far, right? It's prevention of errors, it's, you know, looking at this as far as what could possibly happen. I think that's the superpower of women, we're worriers, and so we, we think of things like that. And so that would just, that's always my ask, is to just make sure we are thinking about all of. we are thinking about all of the what could happen's and planning accordingly. So, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? No?
No, just a comment, Dave. As a district, we do easements, and we ask for easements too, often. This is not unusual. This is relatively common sense. And we need to play nice in the sandbox, because we never know when our next easement needs to come from, who needs to grant us that time and that space. So, you know, I hope we can rectify this matter at this point, because there is a timeframe that is involved, and it's now. We need to get this done, and as a board, we need to finish it. So I hope we can go forward.
I just have a few questions in the, in the new method of putting this down. So before we were, they were going to cut it, obviously, that was, could have created a whole bunch of problems, leaving a seam afterwards, and, and so, but now tunneling underneath sounds better, right? Because it's not going to disrupt anything up on the ground. Just one, do we know how, how far underneath our driveway, that, our parking lot, they're going to be tunneling?
They're going to be about eight feet underground. And our utilities that we have is maybe foot and a half, two feet.
Okay.
So they are well below anything that we will have that can be affected.
Okay. So, and that was my other question, because, you know, what, what's already down there, and what is the possibility of, you know, running into existing utilities?
They, we walked the site with them. They had a drawing. We told them where our electrical lines are, where, you know, you can see where the light poles are, where the sign, the digital sign is. And we showed them where our lines are, and they're, yep, we've already identified that. They have the sanitary sewer that goes out to the road, they've already identified that. And they're going, like I said, eight feet underground, which is, there's nothing that we have that's that low.
Okay. That's encouraging. And then the other, just from my own, you know, personal view of this procedure of tunneling, I've seen other companies doing that in town, mostly the new internet companies are running new fiber lines, things like that, and they are kind of jacking them underneath. But it seems in their process, they're digging a hole every, like, 15, 20 feet to continue that line. And that's what, where I just had a little bit of concern, because if that, if something came about like that, they would have, they would have to start digging through our parking lot.
No. What they will do is they'll, they will establish an open pit on the north side of our parking lot, and then one where they will come out, another open pit. And it's about 800 feet. So they will do one continuous run. They'll start on the north, they'll go all the way down, come up, and then what they'll do is they'll have a lay down where they lay their pipe out for 800 feet, and then they'll pull that through to the north side.
It's pretty incredible they can do this.
So this is kind of a random question, but I know there's a lot of cocaine in that area. Do you think that's already been removed out of the ground when Old Kings went in?
I, I.
Because that could be a problem.
Yep. I know that they have already done soil samples. They've already done, throughout, I've seen where they've marked sites where they've done soil samples. That's something that the contractors.
Well, I guess ultimately, the way that this is written right now, if for some reason they find themselves in a situation where the tunneling doesn't work, there's nothing that gives them access to go through our parking lot without getting a prior approval. That's something I want to make sure that we have baked in here.
Right now, it indicates that the, the method of construction is jack and bore.
Okay. So any, any changes from that would require the board to approve that change?
It would be an amendment to the easement, so yes.
Okay. So I can, I can approve this confidently, that if there's, something goes wrong with what we're approving here today, that they can't come back and just, just on their own based on what we're passing here, and digging through our parking lot to mitigate any problems?
Yes. But the downside of that, I guess, is that if they have a problem, they'll be at a standstill until, I mean, just practically speaking, until we can get.
Yeah, I understand that, but they've chosen this method over the original method. The original method was to dig it straight through, and they changed that. I think it's, I think it's a better solution, right? But again, nothing's perfect. And I just want to make sure that, because I believe that puts us, the impact of that type of project is much greater, because it will affect the longevity of our, our parking lot and our driveways on our, on our campus. So that's why I just want to make sure that, that this does not give them the ultimate, if they have an issue, to say, okay, well, we're just going to go ahead and dig right through the parking lot to solve that.
So Mr. Delaney, and Will, and Chris, Will, to your point, can we as a board say that our chair, if something comes up, that the chair can speak on behalf of the board without us having to hold an executive session, or?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. We, we could add that if that was your pleasure to, the board could delegate, and I guess we could, I can defer to counsel who's there, but the board can delegate authority to the chairman to, to sign an amendment like that, I believe.
Well, I, I still think that, that is a very intrusive method of, of construction. And if that was to happen, I think the board should, should be in on that decision.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to think of like.
And again, we're talking, this is just worst-case scenario. I'm optimistic they're going to be able to execute their plan, and it's going to go tunnel right underneath our, our parking lot, and we're not going to have any problem. That's my hope. But this is a new, a different method, and they're tunneling underground, and then the only way you can remedy that is usually to dig straight down where the problem is. And that, I just want to make sure that that's going to happen, that we, that comes back to us. That's, that's all I want to be assured of.
Currently, the only method they can use is, is jack and bore.
Yeah, I just, so you guys all know this industry better than I do. I just, one, again, I think what Chris was alluding to is, if, they have two months to get this done. And so, Will, to your point, they've run into an obstacle. We, LaShaka, is it seven days, eight days, Mr. Delaney, that we have to publicly notice, like, an executive session or a special session?
I wouldn't anticipate this would be a special session. Normally, agenda meetings, you want to give seven days' notice. You can have a special meeting on less notice than that, as long as it's reasonable. So I feel like, given this timeframe, the board could be brought back together if needed.
Like, we could, we could, like, meet the next day? Like, something has come up onsite? Like, we can all just meet the next day to discuss it?
There's, you need to publicly notice the meeting. There's cases in Florida that say three days' notice is sufficient. There's cases on the other end of the spectrum that say two or three hours is insufficient. So I think on relatively short notice, you can have a special meeting, certainly for a good cause if an issue came up.
Well, I, I've spoken my thoughts, so I'm, I'm good with whatever. I just want to, I think Chris made a really good point, that they only have two months. You know, I just want to make sure they're not, we're not putting them in a place where they can't finish when we need them to be finished by, because of not red tape, but procedural, you know, matters.
Okay. So this, this is on the agenda for tonight?
This is on.
Right. Okay. So, all right. Well, anybody, no one has any further questions, then we'll move on from this here. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to EKG policy. Mr. Wuliah.
Yes.
Good to see you again.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
There you go.
Hey, Tom. How are you doing?
Good afternoon, Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Moore. Today with me, I represent an event from Advent Health, who are here to present the matter of the consideration and potential implementation of a mandatory ECG screening for student athletes in Flagler Schools. This is not their last time presenting for the board. Their last time was in 2021 with Who We Play For. It's, it's an opportunity for Advent Health to share updates and insights, but also for our board members to engage in dialogue, seek clarification, and provide direction to the district that aligns with our commitment to welfare of our students. So Eric and team, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much for having us again, on behalf of Advent Health. It's an honor to partner with Flagler Schools in the endeavor of keeping our athletes healthy and safe as they pursue their, their goals in athletics. And we've had an amazing partnership thus far, and we've discussed how we can advance the care that is delivered to these student athletes in, in a variety of different ways. And our two athletic trainers that are embedded in our two high schools are doing tremendous work, and we presented on that. And this is something that was requested of Advent Health and myself to come forward to share some information on, on the ECG requirements as part of their pre-participation sports physical event. And I think this is, is moving in the right direction. And for today's discussion is just that, is to kind of set the stage on, on some ideas around a policy, what that may look like, answer some of the common questions that come about with these types of policies, and, and how we would implement it, how Advent Health would support it, and, and how, how it will impact, and impact the lives of not only our student athletes, but families. And if you don't mind, before we go into those details, I'd like to share a video that was presented, that Advent Health had put together, celebrating the success of our ECG screenings in Volusia Counties as a, kind of a representation of what this model is set out to do. So this is a story about Brogan Kelly.
Brogan had no symptoms, had no shortness of breath, had nothing, nothing to give us any indication that there was anything wrong with him. And if we didn't do that, we may not have our son today.
My name is Brogan Kelly. I am 17, and I go to Seabreeze High School. I'm the starting inside linebacker.
Last year, between Volusia and Flagler County, we had a little over 1,500 athletes come through for their physicals, with just a little over 1,100 ECGs completed, which was amazing. The physicals are free, and it's a great experience.
I got my screening done, went home, and then like a week later, they called and said I had to go see a cardiologist.
Without getting the ECGs that were offered by Advent Health, we never would have caught the condition that Brogan has. It's called ARCA, anomalous right coronary artery.
They told me I had to not play football, and after a visit or two, they told me I needed surgery.
The surgeon told us that he was doing the surgery to prevent sudden death.
A couple months after surgery, they cleared me to start lifting weights again. And then after a couple months of that, I went back for a six-month follow-up, and they cleared me to play sports.
Just a simple 10-minute, non-invasive screening of the heart rhythm to be assessed by pediatric cardiologists to see if there's anything abnormal could really tell an athlete and their family that there could be something concerning underneath.
The people at Advent Health caught it, so that we could get it fixed. And he's a year later, happy and healthy and ready to play sports.
I get to it every time. I've seen that like 20 times.
That is, wow.
That is the story of Brogan Kelly. That is the story of a young man in a county where it's not required to have ECGs personally, him and his family elected to participate in these voluntary ECGs, and found an abnormality. And just so that we're clear, ECG screenings is just that, it's a screening. It evaluates the electrical conductivity of the heart. The electrical conductivity of the heart is what requires it to pump in a certain manner to keep you alive. When they see the readings, and you see those vital signs, you know, when you're in the doctor's office, when there's something abnormal that a pediatric cardiologist sees, it, they, they wave a flag of concern, of cautionary concern, or if it's significantly abnormal, like Brogan's, it's a red flag concern. And it doesn't diagnose anything. It doesn't prevent sudden cardiac arrest. It just emulates the, the furthering of evaluation and, and medical coverage and care for that, for that individual. And in some individuals, a second screening and precautionary steps and notifying the, the family physician is the, the next step. And in Brogan's case, further evaluation, found an abnormality. Another, another child in his same school did not have the ECG screening. Her name was Julia, was, went into the gym after cheerleading and went in to run some laps to warm up before basketball tryouts, and collapsed, and died right there from sudden cardiac arrest. If it wasn't for our SRO at that school to perform CPR, to call 911 and get that child the care that they needed, that child survived and had the procedure just like Brogan did. And the doctor said, if that child would have had an ECG, we would have, we would have found this and caught this, and we could have prevented that sudden cardiac arrest. Sudden cardiac, sudden cardiac arrest is just that, is a, it's a sudden complication in the heart that causes the heart to stop. It loses function. It's one of the number-one killers in student athletes. And it's not saying it's preventable, but we can do some screenings to kind of take a little of the edge off of, of some of these high numbers that we are finding in, in our students. We're also finding individuals in ROTC. We're finding individuals in BAN. I think down in Vieira, there was an ROT student that had the same scenario, collapse of sudden cardiac arrest. It's, it's, it's a leading cause of concern in, in sports. And there are some things that we can do. You can go to the next slide. I just, speaking about that, to show the focus towards heart health. The new House bill, House Bill 865, was just signed by Governor DeSantis last month. And this is taking a law that's already in place, making it require that an individual on a sideline be CPR and AED certified, and an AED be available within, I think it's three minutes of, of any sporting situation. To now, by July 1st, every coach that you have hired and implemented in your sports programs have to be AED certified and CPR certified. There has to be AEDs readily available. So they're upping it, so no matter what weightlifting practice, conditioning, summer conditioning, training sessions, games, there needs, all coaches will be CPR certified. That's the first line of defense against sudden cardiac arrest. These ECG screenings are not meant to take that away. Advent Health, we have provided, I believe it was three or four AEDs we gave to the athletic trainers to use to go out to the sports that don't have AEDs, like golf, or off-site track and field, or cross-country, and swimming, and bowling, the sports that aren't typically encased in a school property where AEDs are available. So we've tried to make that available. I think the, the foundation has donated some to the schools also. So we're raising awareness and help with Tommy and his team, the athletic directors, the principals, and our athletic trainers. We're making it safe onsite. So we can go to the next slide. And we talked about 1 in 300 students, this is coming from the American Heart Association, about 1 in 300 students have some sort of underlying heart abnormality that could be detected by an ECG screening. And our friends, as Tommy mentioned, from community partners and who we play for, has found that five in every thousand students that are screened have some sort of abnormality that requires additional evaluation and treatment, not necessarily surgery, but that's, that's the, the red flag concerns. And so we think that in, in Flagler County, there's approximately 1,100 student athletes, give or take, the number I think continually grows. And so you're looking at, you know, several students that could be flagged. We had a couple that were flagged last year that were cautionary, and they followed up with their physicians and, and provided the ECG screening results, and are being cared for and monitored. And so this is all in, in the good faith of prevention. And we're hoping that we can, we can provide that information for you. You can go to the next slide. Not to, I don't want to beat this, there is some great documents that are out there. There's great articles, there's been research. There are the naysayers. There are physicians who say it's, it's too much, just focus on, on family medical history and the personal history, health history, and just go off of that. If they're young and they're healthy, they don't need an ECG. But Brogan was healthy. He was young, he was athletic, he had no personal history, no family history of cardiac abnormalities or, or any complications. And so if we went with that, we would have missed them. And so it is a, it is a very simple, non-invasive, 10-minute, 12-lead screen. My son, I just took him during our Volusia physicals this week, and had him at 14 screen, and it took longer, longer to fill out the paperwork than it did to lay there and put the electrodes on and do it. And, and now I feel, as a, as a parent, I feel at ease that, one way or another. And now I feel as a parent, I feel at ease that one way or another, I'm going to, I'm going to get some results and we're moving in a safe environment for him. You can go to the next, I'm not going to go through these documents, but the American Medical Society on Sports Medicine, AMA, American Heart Association, Inter Association of Sports Medicine Professionals, they are all saying that this, this is an element of prevention, is to go one step further is the ECG. It's not a requirement in the state, it's not a mandate, and I guarantee it's just like not making athletic trainers a requirement. It's a financial issue, it's a, it's a challenge in different locations, whether it's rural high schools and stuff like that, to make these laws. And so we feel that Advent Health and our community partner of who we play for, we're here and we have something that we can offer and provide and we think that this could be something to support your concern around athlete health and safety. You can go to the next slide. And if you click a couple more times, I forgot I wasn't going to be, go back. If you look at that red circle that's on that page, even on the bottom of the EL2, the Florida High School Sports Athletic Association Physical, it will say Florida statutes. We understand and acknowledge that we hereby advise that the student should undergo a cardiovascular assessment, which may include such diagnostics as the electrocardiogram or echocardiogram or stress test. Because they understand that no matter, we can have our best Advent Health physicians with a stethoscope and it's just hard to, you can't see or hear that electrical changes or some of those abnormalities. We do the best we can, but this just takes it to the next step, next slide. So the proposal that we, we've briefly discussed in our workshop and something that we're bringing here is what does that look like? And I want to state, Brevard has a requirement, Osceola has a requirement, Orange County has a requirement, Lake is working on it, and here we are at Flagler. And Volusia is still, they had it, they had it during an optional and they withdrew it for a variety of reasons. And not to go into that, but this is, this is where Flagler is, is this is what it would look like or an idea, this is just an idea proposal and option, is we make this a required op, make it optional for year one. Advent Health and the, and the foundation and our athletic trainers and our school, we want to do as much education to the public, to our athletes, to our families, to our coaches about heart health and how this ECG provides that screening that's beneficial. We're moving into the requirement of the AED and the CPR with all our coaches. So we make twenty-four, twenty-five an optional year with a signed waiver by a parent opting them out. And then in year two, we move into the required phase where this is a required ECG, it's just an addition and part of that pre-participation sports physical, which is required by the state on an annual basis. And the options behind that could be, you could test every child every year, or you could do an option like every freshman and every junior. So you're getting it screened twice in a high school, you know, sports career, educational timing. We feel that that is, either one of those is going to be sufficient. Some counties have selected just to do it one time in their high school career. And unfortunately, there's ones that scoot by and they're not getting it done until their senior year to meet that requirement. And we've lost that screening for three years of their, of their high school athletic career. So it's not really a great recommendation. But if, go to the next slide. So the timeline, just looking at this just broadly, and this is what we've done, some of the other school districts have done, is, you know, June first of this year, we go into the optional, we spend the next year educating, creating opportunities for screenings, and then move into next June for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. That would be the second year of the program where it's required. And an option is, is to screen every child that first year, just so we kind of level set, make sure we capture everyone. And then you roll into your third year where everyone that's a freshman or junior gets that physical, gets that screening. Those are all open to interpretations and your desires of how you would like to see that done. But creating something that's got a rhythm to it, so it's easy for our athletic directors and athletic trainers to be able to dictate whether or not these, these children have had that screening. And it also helps with those transfers that are coming in. Next screen. We always ask, are asked this, is hey, this is a great idea, but how do our, how do our student athletes receive an ECG? What are the methods? Because it's hard to create a policy and, and without creating a process to support it. And I will tell you this, those children that were flagged, and this is just a comment on, this is not a referral driving opportunity for Advent Health, this is not a surgical drive for Advent Health, we're not driving volume to us. Brogan did not go to Advent Health. Julia before, that did not go to Advent Health. They sought out offices in Jacksonville. We are just the messenger, we're the screener, the messenger. We will, we will provide any kind of concierge-type service and direction that we can for those that are in need. But those that have providers and have physicians, we want them to follow through with them. This is not, this is about athlete health and safety. This isn't a driving volume or ROI event. So there's opportunities. We provide as part of our partnership, a annual free pre-participation sports physical, which we are getting ready to do in May next month. And we will have our partners at who we play for, and you know who, who we play for are, they're an organization that lost a colleague at sudden cardiac arrest and have a passion and a mission to test every child, no questions answered. And so we bring them along and they will be doing our free screening. So the physical and the ECG screenings will be free, two nights of opportunity. That's one of the biggest pushes that we want to provide. Second, Advent Health for Children offers a ECG screening at eight locations. And when they find out that potentially Flagler would have that, that requirement, they, they could expand that into, into our area. It's simple as scanning a code, something like this, or calling a number, it's fifteen dollars to go in, get a screening and get results all in the same, all in the same timeframe, which is excellent. You can go to your own personal physician, you can go to who we play for is going to, we've already committed this, that they are going to come once in the fall and once in the spring/winter time at both high schools to do additional screenings. This will be a program that they will support and they sometimes have scholarships and opportunities, grants to provide free screenings or at a very low cost. The one thing I really wanted to look into is if our, if this was something that moved forward, our athletic trainers that are embedded, we would purchase those same ECG screening units that who we play for uses and we would put them in each of the high schools with each of the athletic trainers. And those student athletes that missed any of these, that needed that screening, or we needed to do a follow-up, or we had a new transfer or something, we could provide that ECG screening in the clinics under the athletic trainer. Those results would be sent to a pediatric cardiologist in our group and would be evaluated the same way. So we feel that there are several opportunities to deliver the ECGs in the community and this is something that we're passionate about, is supporting heart health. And the next slide, I think there's only, this is the last one. So the only other thing to, not the only thing, but one other thing to consider is how do you manage opt-out? As we discussed, if we do an opt-out, every parent would say, oh, I'm running late, oh, I never got to that appointment, I never did that, and we'd have everyone opt-out. But at the same time, I'm hoping that through our education for the first optional year, people will not want to opt-out and we will create so many opportunities that that's not a, an option for them, that is every parent would want, is the best for their child and this would be something that we do. But the opt-out clause would be something that you, as a board, would have to determine whether you opt-out by a physician signing it. Because some people say, hey, I'm under, my child's under the care of a physician for the last ten years, they're healthy, they've evaluated and the doctor would say, you know, they're not needed to have an ECG, that's fine, and they would sign. Or a parent or guardian may be your option, or some counties have no opt-out offer. So that would be how you guys handle that. But that's my, my storyline, that's my presentation. I know there's probably many questions and I know there's a lot of information, but thank you for giving me an opportunity to deliver that.
Who reviews the ECGs and signs off on them?
So they are pediatric cardiologists, who we play for has a handful, ten or more physicians that will read these. Part of them, part of them are with Advent Health, some are with Orlando Health, some of them are with the Moore's Children's Center. So these are pediatric cardiologists that are reading them.
And just a comment, if we did an opt-out, I would put that back on parents because physicians would not be happy about signing off on those.
And we, and we've come across that. I put that up as an option, but I wouldn't recommend that because there's not too many docs that are going to say, yeah, you don't need one.
Yeah, liability.
Yeah, there's too much liability. Absolutely.
Good call.
And I like, I like the idea, I don't like the thought of eliminating kids from participating mandatory if they don't do it. I mean, this is a parental rights state. And I think that's something that we always, in every decision we make, we have to maintain that it's the parents' rights. And if they opt-in, great. If they opt-out, I think we have to have something for them. So, I mean, we've got kids, just look at vaccinations, people don't want their kids vaccinated. We know they're good for them, but they don't want their kids vaccinated for lots of reasons. And I think we have to, as a large group in a public school system, you know, we have to be very careful how we move on this, simply because if we make it mandatory without an opt-out, you're limiting that. And that, that is not how I see athletics. Yes, it's great, we can save a kid, I get it, but not all parents would care. And that's, that's the sad part, but it does happen.
Aren't, aren't, aren't physicals required for sports and athletics anyway?
Yeah, but they're not requiring ECGs yet. Because, and he's right, because availability. There are rural schools that can't get the machines, there are rural schools that, that don't have any, that's very limited to their opportunities.
Right, but here they would have access.
They have access here.
So I would, I would just respectfully disagree. If we're requiring the, the physical, I don't see any reason why not to require.
Well, it's not at the same time, these won't be done at the same time, correct?
Pardon me?
Will the EKGs be done at the same time as the physical, like they?
Well, when we have our mass event where we have, do our physicals and we have our ECGs, yes, that free event, they would be at the same time. So they would complete the physical and then finish off with the male and female ECG.
Because I actually had a, I was kind of curious about the liability too. If you offer it, but you don't require it, and then God forbid something happens, is there a liability on our part? Because if I was a parent, I would, and in that situation, even if I opted out, I would make the case, you should have required it.
I think also, one of my thoughts along with that was, we hear a lot about communication, right? And I said in the former meeting, like communication only happens when it is received on the other end. And so to your point, should something happen and a parent says, I didn't get that, I didn't see that, I think that the liability is there, that we are better protected to just make it required.
Are these other counties saying for sure, like you have to do it, there is no opt-out?
They do have some opt-out structures. I think one county has a physician opt-out, one and other counties have parent opt-outs. I can get more details on what that looks like.
Yeah, well, I, I just, I, I share some of the concerns that Cheryl brought up here about mandating it. I think it is something that we should make available, encourage, educate our parents. But I have very, I'm very concerned about making it a requirement. Again, it goes back to the parental rights factor here. And again, to, to, to one person, they might say, well, it just totally makes sense, right? Well, to another parent, they may have a different view for some reason, right?
So Will, let me ask, can I ask you a question? Are we willing then to give the opt-out for physicals? Physicals are mandatory.
How many more layers will we put on top of this? You start with this one and then there could be another one the next time around.
No, 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 what I'm saying is...
I mean, I'm just saying you just keep going and add, add more and more requirements for, for...
No, that's not my question. My question is, are we then going to provide an opt-out for parents who don't want their kids to take a physical?
You can't by FSA.
Right, no, I...
Right, so you're asking me a question that we can't do. So, but the thing is, I'm just saying that you can keep going and add and add and add things to, for the requirements to play sports, right? It, it's very clear what the, what the, what the consequences are here, and it's affecting one in three hundred students, no doubt about it. And I think that, like you said, the education part of this to the parent is, is really important. But we're not here, we cannot be the parent of, of the children and continue to put these layers on, on their access to, to sports or anything else. So that's just, I'm just letting you know where I stand on it.
Yeah. I just think, I wonder liability-wise, how that would impact us.
Well, and I think, I'm actually in agreement with everybody. If a parent is opting out, like, so if it is, so to me, I see this as a requirement with an opt-out avenue, right? But, but it would be something that has been presented to the parent, if they, like we've talked about with code of conduct, right? If they choose to not read it and they just sign it, then to me, we are, we're, we're good and we've done our best chance. I mean, we, we are talking about a scenario where we could make it a requirement, but we need to hear from, it would be, we've talked about this before, it's not an opt-in, right? We're not having to get signatures from everybody on an opt-in, but you, you would have to sign off for an opt-out.
But I, I think we, we have more liability when we create the requirement than if we have it the way that it is now.
Why is that?
Well, because let, let's say that, that we review one of these things and then that, and we allow them to play and then they, they, we miss something and they, they do have a problem. I don't want to play doctor. I mean, I know that, we want to put as many layers of safety and security as we can for our students and our children. But I think there's a point when, from, from a government's perspective, that you have to say, okay, well, we're, we might be overreaching into the parent's responsibility now. You could, you could make the case for many different tests to be done before somebody plays sports or anything, based on its potential life-saving or health benefits, right? And it could just keep going. So that's just my feeling at face value right now, based on the information I have in front of me, that is my concern. I think absolutely every parent should, should have their, their student athlete go through this process, but it should be on the parent at, at that point.
Well, as a provider, I would totally support this. I do think it's very important. There's a lot of things I think that we do too much of, like vaccines, dental care in school, but if we can catch something, it's, you know, it's incredibly important. I would support it for sure. It's not invasive. I know that you're going to have those few parents who worry about radiation or something, although that's not the case, but...
So what about a student that, you know, we have the free day here and they have no way to get to that, they can't, they can't get the free one, they still want to play sports, but they don't have the money to go to their doctor, or maybe the, even the fifteen dollars or twenty-five dollars I think you had presented there, they can't pay it, you know? And, and I'm just saying, it's creating barriers for entry into athletics.
The physical's required anyway.
That would be my only thing, is the physical's required, so if they can't come to the free one, they're going to have to go pay for a physical somewhere because they're not going to pay, or they're not going to play. So it's just the next step.
Well, fair enough on that.
We don't want, we don't want, we don't want, and this is, I totally, everything you're saying, it all makes sense, absolutely. And no matter what the decision, we continue to provide these ECGs as part of our physical event because we feel very, very strongly about it. However, we understand there has to be right for each, each group and each organization. I, I really feel that, you know, we don't want to turn children away. Who we play for has a grant program, it's a financial constraint, they fill out a form and they get the ECG for free. They do it, that's their mission. So we don't ever want that to be a barrier, but we understand that that is a concern for some families. So we, you know, addressing it and having some kind of plan is definitely an important component.
And I think Eric touched on it, we are looking at buying mobile machines to empower the athletic trainers to be able to do it. So obviously, we would want everyone to come to our physical event because those kids that can't afford ECGs probably can't afford a physical either, right? So it's a one-stop shop, get it done. And then we're really promoting those, but we recognize that people are going to be out of town, they're not going to have a ride, they're going to miss it. And there, there is a population that needs special handholding, right, for some things like this and services like this. So a portable ECG machine, I think, would be an answer now. Could an AT do every student, right, student athlete? No, but I know there will be a handful of students that will take advantage of that service.
Okay, just a couple of other questions.
I just have one, Superintendent Moore, you know, we have the classroom to creators of firefighters, do they have access to an ECG machine? Or is that something that we could have at the school?
I don't think, I don't know that they have that.
No, because we, we help them, we help out the firefighting academy students that need, they need an ECG and a physical also. need, they need an ECG and a physical also to participate in their academy.
Eric, can you just really quickly, because I keep hearing EKG, can you just, no, 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 but, no, 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 but can you just clarify, is there, is there a difference? And can you clarify?
There's a European version, which is the EKG, and then research in the States-
So, they are one and the same?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, cool. I did not know that.
That should have been slide one.
I just, for whether it's for my benefit or the benefit of everybody, I just want to clarify that. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I know it as EKG, so that-
That's fine.
Awesome.
Just a couple. You had mentioned about the, like, doing it in freshman year and senior year. So, if, if a child, is a child born with this? In other words, could it change? You do a screening and they didn't have an issue, but now, a year later, now they have an issue? Or is this something they've had always?
Yeah, there, some of the underlying things, like HCM, which is hypertrophic cardiomyopathy, is when the, the, the vessels of the heart start to shrink and they're, and they're smaller, so the flow is limited. Those types, those are congenital. I mean, you're born with that. So, it's a matter of, you know, so that individual, you do an ECG, you would, and it was positive, you'd probably find that from a physician through further evaluation. And it's, it's not going to change. It's there. And most of those conditions are, are that way. And so, that's where the, the doing it every year isn't as necessary as we thought it would be. And so, controlling costs, controlling the requirement, you could do it, you have to do it your freshman year, or, you know, or when you enter the school system and, and be done with it if you needed to. But that-
And the other question I have is, do you collect and share, not personal information, right? Like, not particular, but with your partners right now, do you share out to the districts, we did X number of screenings and we had X number of red flags? Okay.
Yes. So, we get, they get a green flag.
That would be important.
Green flag is an email conversation that just says, thank you for coming, your ECG was normal, no concerns. The yellow is, there is some cautionary concerns. We'd like you to take your-
Check it out.
-ECG and, and send it to your pediatrician during your follow-up. No, no red flags at that time, but kind of provide those next steps. And then, the red flag, the pediatric cardiologist would directly contact the family and talk about the findings, have them screened again. ECG with who we play for, just let you know, their, their research has provided a 2% to 3% false positive rate, which is often resolved with redoing the exam-
Sure.
-for your charge.
Good. I was just curious about that part.
How many, how many student athletes do we have? Do we have that, that number?
Yeah, we have.
Say about a hundred thousand.
I said 1,100, middle and high school, based on what my ATs tell me that their schools have. And then, I added on some of the, the, the two middle schools, right?
If I may, and this kind of plays in a little bit, too, whether we would make it required or what. So, I'm going to do a Sally Hunt ramble real quick. Please hang in there with me. Thinking of that student who has the ECG, EKG, and they're flagged, knowing that our student athletes have come from all different incomes, religion, whatnot, what is policy then? If they're flagged and the family either can't afford treatment, religious-wise, they, they won't do treatment, then what, do we have a secondary pol-, do we have a next step policy of, do they, can they be on the field, right? Or is that, is that now the same as they didn't pass a physical? The second piece to that, this is before the rambling comes in, but I think it's relevant. If I am a family and we have high hopes for Bobby, that he's going to be an NFL star, and if he gets flagged for this and can't play, right, then we're ruining our chances. So, maybe I don't want to, kind of like ignorance is bliss, we don't want to, not that they don't love their kids, but we don't want to run the risk. So, these are the things that kind of go through my mind. And if you kept up with me on that, you're all very brilliant.
I'm right there with you.
But if you can kind of speak to what maybe is happening in other districts, or what other things we should be thinking about.
That is a great, great comment. I don't know if I can answer what other districts are doing, but your concerns right there are, we, we understand those. So, there are families that do not want to have their child screened in fear that they would find something and there would be a burden financially, or emotionally, or physically on that child or family. I, it, we all, we can look at that different ways. So, we don't have an answer from an Advent Health standpoint. I have brainstormed, could we create a health fund to help those that, if they were flagged red, could we then take them to our pediatric cardiologist and do a, a one-time, like, well-visit kind of follow-up, where they do another 12 lead, or they do an echo? And if it was positive at that point, then, then it would then turn into an insurance claim, or wherever they decided to go that step. You know, we always rescreen them from an ECG standpoint, just to make sure there wasn't an error in it, because we don't want to stimulate that concern in any child. But, and then there are those that don't want to be screened because they're, they're fearful. And we've, what the future may be, and we've seen that happen in athletes. We have a professional athlete that we've done a story on. He went to Penn State and he was, he was living a very prosperous career in football, had COVID, and NCAA required ECG screenings to come back from COVID because of the ineffect of, of the heart. The ECG screening found hypertrophic cardiomyopathy, which is an underlying disease. It had nothing to do with COVID. It's just the ECG happened to fight. Here, he's, he's dealing with something very similar, similar to Damar Hamlin, that sudden cardiac arrest on the field. And so, this is really stimulating. At what point do you do the screenings? And so, a lot of supporters are saying, if we can screen them before they get into college sports, or before they get older, then they have time to deal with these. It gets more dangerous as, as time goes on with some of these underlying conditions. Some of them are just a simple ablation. It's just electrical change in the heart and ablation, which are done outpatient for, for lots of individuals on a daily basis for a variety of reasons. That's the most common. And some of these, like Brogan surgery, is a much more complicated, but that's an underlying defect that the child was born with.
Can you share what happened, though, with the results? So, I got red flagged. My physician calls me. Is that shared with the athletic director, or it's really up to the parent as to whether or not they return that kid to play or take a next step?
That's, yeah.
That's a great question.
Yeah, that would be great to know. Yeah.
So, on the FHSA form, and this is from my knowledge, maybe for the board's knowledge as well, is there, we obviously have to turn our paperwork in through our athletic directors, and they have to upload everything through AthleticClearance.com. Is there anything through there that will flag that, saying this athlete was flagged through the EKG? Because the only, the only page on BL3 is the consent and release for reliability certificate for sudden cardiac arrest information, which all of our student athletes are required to go through concussion education, sudden cardiac arrest and heat, uh, heat illness education. So, do our athletic directors, are they, do they receive this knowledge as well?
So, because it's not required in this state, and there's nothing on the, the state paperwork, because it's not required, and so, there's nothing in Athletic Clearance, which is a state-based program.
Oh, that's scary.
When you upload, upload the document, there's nothing in there to click, saying they're cleared from a cardiovascular standpoint. Now, if you had some sort of, I don't know if that, I don't use Athletic Clearance on a daily basis, I don't know if you can customize it for your county or your school to add, you know?
Can you add it on the, on the form where it just says, you know, a, a check mark, cleared the, you know, EKG screening, or?
So, through Athletic Clearance, I, I will have to look at the, the platform with our two athletic directors. I, I'm not sure the athletic trainers are, are employees of Advent Health. I'm not sure they're-
They do have access to that.
Do they get the information from who we play for at all, even from an email through Advent Health, saying that there was a, a flag?
No, no, because it's not required. It's, 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 can I just back up? The, the new EL2 form, which is the evaluation physical form, the state changed it last year, because it used to include that, I'm an AT myself, and so, I want the medical history of every child. So, I understand their, what I'm dealing with in case there's an emergency or an injury or illness. But they've actually made the medical history form, a, a form that is separate, and you do not supply that to the schools anymore. So, you get a school that has the, the, the page three, which is the physical itself, which says they, they were cleared musculoskeletally, medically, here's their vitals, and it's signed off on the physician. And on the backside of page four, it would say they're cleared to play all sports. The bottom section, there's a parent section where if you want to fill in any meds or any medical history that you feel the AD, the athletic trainer, needs to note, that's where you put it. But technically, the athletic trainer doesn't even get the medical history anymore.
Which from a liability standpoint is actually better, right? I mean, because to Will's point, we're, then it's really up to the family to take that information and-
Yeah.
-make decisions accordingly.
It does make it challenging for a healthcare provider as an athletic trainer who is licensed in the state and is serving that child or that patient. And then, there's, there's a conflict, and because they didn't know that there was an allergic reaction, or they didn't know that the patient had a, you know, a family history of heart problems, or that they were, had sickle cell, or whatever it may be. So, it's just, those, I mean, I understand both sides, but from healthcare.
And Mr. Delaney- Just a moment. I was going to say, Chair, liability continues to be brought up. I don't know if we want to have Attorney Delaney, um, chair to provide any clarification to the board and answer any questions.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, are you aware of any cases?
I've, I've litigated a number of cases on behalf of districts, not particularly pertaining to ECGs, but there are AED cases and the mandate that those be on campus. But the bottom line is, the FHSA release is a very strong release on behalf of districts, as long as they are getting obtained and signed by the parent, the parent's acknowledging it before the athlete sets on, steps foot on the field or the court. And before tryouts, before the first practice, before any of this, we got to have the forms on hand. So, whenever I've seen districts not be able to defend themselves if something happens, it has only been because the form wasn't properly processed and, and in hand before the first activity.
Yeah, I can see that.
And for the, the district and Advent, we, we need direction as to if you would like for us to bring back some language to the board. We just need direction on the, on the way that the board wants to go, so we know what next step, next steps we need to take in order to bring information back to the board, so that you guys can make a, a decision or, you know, not discuss this topic, or however you want to go forward.
I mean, it sounds like consensus. We all agree it's important. There may be some disagreement in whether parents are required or not, but it sounds like the consensus is to have a parent opt-out. But I'm hoping that we can get this in place sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I would just like it, the parents to be the ones that opt out. And actually, I would love it if it was year one, we made it a requirement. But it sounds like everybody's going to have the option to come do it anyway, so.
But is year one, because I was going to ask that, is year one even an option? Because I saw the date, June 1st, 2024, would be considered year one, which is tomorrow.
Right. And I, and I use that as a, a setting the stage, just saying. So, June, well, if you did June 1st and you made it optional, and I'm just, I'm not on the school board, but I know when you, when you throw out a requirement just like that to the public, it, it just, it frustrates people, and we don't want that to be a frustration. But I'm just saying, we've, we've, I spoke with Teresa Rizzo and our Advent Health team and our athletic trainers, how we can be creative in education on heart health, even outside of just the ECG screens, just all over heart health. And we can use this year to, to implement new programs, maybe get our Advent Health Children Hospital to open up two more clinics in the area, or something like that, you know, purchase our equipment so that we can screen them in-house. So, there's different things that it gives us that year as we're leading up to it, to continue to grow and prepare for that required year.
And to Ms. Hunt's point, I mean, at, at the date that we sit in right now, and Mr. Delaney, correct me if I'm wrong, if the board were to say, yes, we want to move forward, your policy would not be in effect by June 1st. But their edu-, the education would, will start, but the policy would not be approved by that date.
So, if you can just clarify that, because that's what I really ultimately wanted to get at. Is it even, because, please, no, I would love for this to start tomorrow. I just don't even know, is it even possible, logistically, whatnot, you know, policy-wise, whatnot, to even execute this by?
If, if it's optional, right, if it's optional, we're talking about two months, why could that not just be operational and we work on the policy?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so I don't-
It's optional right now.
Yeah.
You know, and so, the June 1st would be really looking at the, the communication, the education, those pieces. But we would have to work to get the, the policy drafted and approved.
Yeah, but we don't need the policy to do this.
To do the optional.
To do the optional.
No, it's optional now.
It's, it's already, yeah.
It's getting it now.
More of it in terms of like making it mandatory.
Yeah.
Well, I would, again, I personally would like to see it required, because it's all a one-stop shop, the way you have it set up.
But when, like by Ju-, I guess that's, because if, listen, if, you can have my vote, I just want to understand what it is you're wanting, and is, if what you're wanting is even possible. If it is-
I guess, I don't see why it wouldn't be possible.
For it to be required as of June 1st, 2024.
I mean, that's just me. I wouldn't, I don't see why it wouldn't be required.
They need to-
I mean, it wouldn't be done.
Can I make one, one point, is our physicals, our mass physicals, where we do most, all of our screenings-
Yes.
-are May 15th and 16th. So, if the communication isn't done early enough, families are going to miss that, and then, we're going to be back at doing another large screening event.
So, it's not June, it's May.
For all intents and purposes, I just put dates down for guidelines on what the structure of an annual policy, not, there's nothing left.
I just look at it more of in calendar years. For the 24, 25 calendar school year-
There you go.
The, it will be optional, like it is right now, but with the understanding that if the board were to go in this direction, the 25, 26 school year, it will be mandatory.
I got you. Okay.
With an opt-out.
With an opt-out.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
When we did that in Volusia County, we had, we went through the optional a year before they would drew it. We had the most, highest number of athletes at our physicals. We had more engagement. We had more care provided. They had a higher number of athletes submit their paperwork on time, and it would, so that was, it was a real positive all the way around, just to get them into that kind of-
Yeah, I mean, I would totally support that. I just want it to start, even if it's, I just want it to start.
Right, so they, they still have the option to, to participate. So, we're doing it. It's just a, a different, whether we're going to keep going that way or change the policy.
So. Make it mandatory. That's the difference.
Can our, can our coaches or, you know, Superintendent Moore, because this is so important to all of us or several of us, I just, I guess my ask, not that you're not already doing it, but my ask would be that we're doing everything we can, whether it's coaches influence, whatever, any communication channels, to make this be, you know, just really a successful screening event this year. Because I, I think you and I are both pretty passionate about it, starting as soon as possible, so.
Our goal is to fill up every spot that they have, to allow for our families to get free physicals and free screeners. I've already signed my-
I know you, I know you love our kids. I know you love our kids.
We're, we're definitely working, because it is, it is a support and a help to our, our students and our community, because as we've stated, it is required for them to have the physicals. And so, we, we are going to do our best to support it. We, we appreciate the partnership with Advent Health-
Oh, absolutely.
-for, for doing it for our families and our, for this community. That's our goal, to fill up every spot.
We have about 320 filled right now. And so, our marketing is really kicking off today. We didn't want to confuse individuals with the Volusia ones that was going south of us last week. So, now that that's over, our marketing team's flight plan for marketing is, is taking off, and they're already posting today. So, I expect those numbers to go up.
What is the date on that?
May 15th and 16th. It's Wednesday and Thursday evening from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Flagler Palm Coast High School.
Is there an age limit on that?
We, we just said grades six through 12. So, those that are going in the middle schools for us, and those going, and those that do ROTC, band, firefighting academy, all those can take part of it. Anyone has a required for a physical within school function, not necessarily opening it to pop Warner Voice House and, you know, Little League, stuff like that.
I, I also would like to know why Volusia pulled back, because they were obviously ahead of us on this curve.
Yeah, I mean, I think similar concerns.
Yeah, I mean, I think similar concerns, I think there are some politics played into it. I think there was a very vocal parent group that played into it.
Cause they, I mean, they have probably four, four to five times more athletes than we do.
They have about 5500.
There's a physician in the community who used to serve on the board who, similar to what Eric shared, felt like a physician should just be able to clear a student, not necessarily an E C, an E C G.
And I kinda suspected that fact, but I wanted, I wanted to make sure where, where they stood, because they're our neighbors in St. Phil, we have nothing about St. John's.
I will say, we had this past week, and Eric can share, but we had some very vocal parents that were, you know, who's go to Seabreeze High School where the Brogan was from.
Yeah, that's shocking, yeah.
That were just so baffled by why this wasn't an issue, lots of social media commentary about it. So I do think the school district has received a little bit of backlash for withdrawing.
Our, our survey found that 97%, 97% of those that showed up, we treated just under 1,100 athletes in this past week, that they said that ECG screenings were a crucial part of their decision to be there.
So 3% wagged the tail of the dog.
Yeah, but that's what happens, you know?
And I will also say, I don't see it happening in the next couple of years, but I know that there's discussion with the same groups that are pushing these AED and CPR requirements with, with, uh, Governor DeSantis, that they are pushing for ECG requirements. But it's the accessibility to it and the finances which is holding it up.
I get that.
I wouldn't be surprised if it becomes a requirement.
But we are blessed and lucky and so I, I think, yes, taking advantage of it. Can I circle back on just real quickly on two things? The mobile machine, again, transportation has already been discussed, but that is a concern of mine of students who, who can't, and, cause we're not doing this during school hours, we're doing this always either summer, yeah, this would be always either after hours or summertime. So, um, if we do have the policy where we do make it a requirement with an opt-out, is that mobile machine something that is?
We all support that.
But that, we can just count on that?
And I believe it would be, if they, if it is purchased and provided, be stored at, with the athletic trainers.
It'll be stored at.
At the two high schools.
Correct.
And that trainer would be properly trained to be able to, to do that.
And vetted by our pediatric cardiologist for that process.
Okay. You can't, you can't fix it all though. I mean, there's no way you can, this is a good idea of how to control it, but, I mean, you look at the golf teams, they're out in the golf course and, you know, you can't have any athletic trainer there, they aren't there, they're out there all by themselves, wherever you go, throughout all the counties, you know, you can't, and there's not gonna be a machine there, there's not.
But we're, so maybe we're.
I'm just talking about training.
Unless you're gonna spend, right.
Well, part of it is.
So there's two things, the AED and the ECG screening device, the ECG screening device will be housed in the athletic training room.
This would be the, this would be for a catch-all for anybody who could not come.
The AEDs, we continue to help provide the school.
If you've gotta buy and have more of them available.
Should I have mobile units that take out to bowling and.
Yeah, they're gonna have to learn and have people there.
Cause they need to, because that's a state law, that's not an asset.
Yeah, so Cheryl, you, so I was asking specifically, not about the AED, I was asking specifically about the EKG, ECG. And then, um, Superintendent Moore, this may be a question for you or for Tommy, but should we find that we have a student athlete who falls into that scenario where they do have an issue, it, surgery is required and they don't have the funds, whether it's booster, whether, uh, like a booster club, whether it's, um, Ed Foundation, like is there an entity within Flagler County that could support running a fundraiser or something to get? Like I just, that's just the piece that concerns me is, okay, I've, I've found out my child could die like at any second, you know, but now I don't have the funds to pay for this expensive surgery, so. That's just a, that's just something I would want, if we, like, I want us to do this, to Colleen's point, I want us to do this as quickly as possible, but I just wanna be prepared, if we're gonna start doing this more widespread testing, I want us to be prepared for the scenarios that could come with it.
I mean, I think our foundation would be involved to assist. I mean, I think to Eric's point, even in Volusia where this is not mandatory, we continue to provide the service, cause we're super passionate about it.
Cause we're talking about this could be like one student every five years. So I realize that this is, this is not going to be a prevalent situation.
And we talk about this all the time, and I think, at least from our end, we would be happy to support the cause. So I think how we partner together on that one-off scenario, um, you know, it's about saving the life of a kid.
Yeah, I just, I would also want, any ideas you guys would have of how do we message that to parents, right? Cause again, and that we don't, we don't want parents opting out, we want them to want to do this, right? So, so those are just the things that I, if I'm a parent, like, oh my gosh, if I'm already struggling to buy gas, like, so, if that could be, I don't know, not that, cause we know we can't promise things, but I also feel like if we want parents to do this, we need to kind of give them some assurances.
I totally agree, and I think Anna and I can take it back to our team members evaluating, like, I'd love to see, like, if someone was red flagged, they could have that first one-on-one, just a screening follow-up with our pediatric cardiologist at maybe no cost. It's, we get kinda hand-tied with free, free medical care, you know, so we have to be cautious legally in what we can offer. But I think there could be some scenario that we create that, um, we definitely would create pathways for, uh, removing false positives by re-screening, you know, at, at no choc, no cost. So I think there's some things that we could come up with, but I, I, I agree with you, that's a message you wanna deliver.
So what we're hearing is that the board would like for us to bring back some sample language for you to consider, um, and so we will begin working on getting that language together. It will come back for you in the, as a workshop item. Um, and then the board will give us direction and then we will continue to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
It's exciting, yeah, it's exciting.
All right, so now we're gonna move on to the, um, 8.03, review of proposed student generation rate. I'll come.
Chairman Piri, this is the board. William Whitson, I'm your intergovernmental guy, I don't have anything like life and death, uh, but I do deal with a lot of jurisdictions and we are a party to the interlocal agreement. And all of what's happening in the county is there's a lot of rooftops going up that they haven't noticed. And each one of those rooftops represents statistically, a student at some point in the process down the road. And, um, what we've done is the ILA kind of required us to have a student generation rate. We had one in 2021, there was a really exhaustive study done by Tischler-Weiss, that's what I started with when I came in, and now we're looking at, okay, is that accurate? And ha, we've gone through a very detailed methodology, um, to kinda update that, figure that out. And I have here the expert, Mr. John Gilrich, who is gonna walk you through how we updated the 2021 rate to something that we think is more accurate for 2024 and is directly on point with Flagler County. So John, if you wanna kinda walk them through.
Thank you, William, um, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Superintendent John Gilrich from JV Pro, um, worked on a lot of school planning issues for districts around the state. And so next slide, please. So, I wanna tell you what we did, we're gonna start off with our scope. Um, it was a very limited scope, we were looking right at the student generation rate analysis, so we're not thinking about doing an analysis for future capacity or, you know, future projections 20 years out on population. That data's out there and available, um, I can talk data for hours, I won't do that to you today. But I'll tell you our scope, the first thing we did was we assessed land development and land use in the county. Um, we determined your student address locations and their associated housing type, and I'll cover each of those, um, these items in depth for you. We updated that student generation rate, um, from 2021, and now we presented to the interlocal working group, and now we're presenting here to the school board workshop. Next slide. Um, so I'll start you off, really, you know, what we're doing with the student generation rate analysis is looking at the impact, uh, new development will have on the school board, so trying to determine how many students are going to come out of that new development and how many seats you're keeping for concurrency and reserving at, at a certain school. Um, so the first thing we have to do is figure out where all the students are. Um, and so we went and mapped all the students. To do that, we use the E911 data set as well as the parcel data set. So, um, your sheriff's office maintains a data set for address locations throughout the county. We take the students' addresses, we match it to the, to E911 address, if that doesn't match, we use the parcels. And we're mapping to the middle of a parcel, so we can also look at the land use. Um, if you have 40 kids, 50 kids, 70 kids on an apartment complex, you're still gonna see one point, 70 points on top of one another. This analysis, for the mapping, we mapped everybody. So we mapped all the charter students and all of the homeschool students, as well as everybody attending, uh, Flagler Public Schools.
No privates though, right?
No privates, yeah.
And in quid of clarification, we took the October count, which is the standard.
I'm thunder for the next slide.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, uh, what you're looking at there is a map of all 13,000-plus students, um, in the county. This is from the October 40-day count, your official count, so a month after school has started. So this is at the county level, um, you're not gonna be able to say, you know, individually where somebody lives at this level, but rest be assured, if you go to the next slide, you'll see we're mapping these down to the parcel level in a neighborhood, so we know exactly where the students live, what type of house it is. Um, you have over 14,000 students that we mapped, um, including the charter and the homeschool, and 132 of them were outside of the county. Um, and then we created these subsets of your K through 5, your middle and your high school students. Next slide, please. Folks tend to generalize and make conceptions regionally based on their local observations. So we've included some data for you all, just looking at the changes of 2021 on the left, 2010 on the right. Um, and so you're seeing an increase in the number of households, while some of the colors may look lower, that's because those census blocks have been split, so there's actually more people there. Um, so you can look in the southern end of the county, there's more people there, but it may not look as intensive a color. But we are seeing more family households moving in, particularly within Palm Coast. Next slide, please.
Do we, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is this on board docs?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's opening, it, it gives an error.
Yeah, we posted it to the.
Oh, yesterday, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good, you're.
Go ahead.
Uh, another sort of data set we're looking at, we're using census data, is, uh, you know, children's age 5 to 17 would be attending the public schools, so we're looking at an increase there, again, in central part of the county where we would expect where a lot of the residential development has been happening. Next slide, please. And this is one that, you know.
I'm, I'm sorry, cause I, I just wanna make sure that all the board members are able to, to get to it.
Yeah, I was just trying to.
I just refreshed and I'm able, well, I'm not gonna say anything yet.
I have a paper copy here, if you want that.
I'll take the paper copy, cause mine won't, won't load for some reason, thank you.
It will make more. So just let me know.
Page eight right now.
Okay, yours then.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So another thing, you know, I've heard is that, you know, we're a, a community of retirees and, and when we look at the data, that is not always true. We've seen that families are moving in, we've seen that you have an increase in 5 to 17-year-olds. This is your population 65 and older. Um, and, next slide, please. We've overlaying that with the student addresses, you can kinda see them, um, behind those census block groups. So, you know, the two aren't mutually exclusive, you may have a census block group that has a higher percentage of 65-year-olds, but there are still students spread throughout the county. And this, if you go to the next slide, this is again, looking at 2021, 2010, um, the age, the percentage of the population over the age 65. And we just wanna provide this information so you all have an idea of the trends in your community. Next slide, please. And then a final comparison of children under 5, so this will really tell you, um, where you're gonna see the next set of kids moving into elementary school.
Oh, interesting.
And so again, you'll see that, that slice of red running down, um, 95, and that has been now split into eight different block groups versus three or four before. So that's why you're seeing that change in color, but overall, you're seeing an increase in children in families.
Am I reading this right to, to say the west side from 2010 to now, um, you're looking at going from 51 to 75 to 100, 250?
That's, that's, that would be right, when you're looking at it. Now, that is, we're looking at total, right? That's not percentage, so, um, you're gonna see shifts, you know, children, children age, people move, but, you know, by and large, we're seeing an increase in population, an increase in children, an increase in family households. Next slide, please. Um, using that parcel data, and this is gonna be the segue into land use, um, you know, we're using the parcel data, looking at, um, the type of housing that it is. And then we also, this gives you an idea of how development has trended throughout the county by the decade. Next slide, please. So getting into this sort of the land use and land development, again, we use property appraiser data, um, to determine the land use. And that is, there's a code in, in all the property appraisers in the state of Florida from the Department of Revenue, and that's what they use to appraise your property for tax purposes. And so that's what we use to say, is this a single-family home? Is this an apartment building? Is this a condominium? That's the type of descriptions that they have in the Department of Revenue's, um, 135 different land uses, that's what we use to go through and categorize the housing in Flagler County. Next slide. So we first look at categorizing residential, non-residential, so we throw out things like warehouses and businesses and things like that. Per your interlocal agreement, we subdivide that residential land use into single-family, multifamily and mobile home classifications. So those are the three sets of residential types that we're classifying for this analysis, and that's similar to the 2021 Tischler-Weiss study. Something that we did for this was we removed the 55 and plus communities, all right? When you, that's, that's all right, go to the next slide. Um, when you look at how that plays out, this is a map of your housing type, so you can see single-family dominates there in dark blue, there's a high concentration.
What's the date on this? Is this as of when?
This would have been 2023 parcel.
Okay.
Parcel date, yeah.
It's the latest that we had access.
Yeah, I gotcha.
So mobile homes, so you can see a concentration of mobile homes out west, but that's about where all of the, they are, they're on sort of single lots out west, mixed single-family homes and mobile homes out there. There aren't a ton of RV parks, you do have them, but you don't have a ton of them. Um, and then there's even less multifamily housing. Now, let's go to the next slide. Let's talk about sort of those different categories. You know, again, we remove the communities that are designated 55-plus. Duplexes and townhomes, per best practices, are treated as single-family residences, and it's especially valid here in Flagler County, because the majority of your duplexes are found in single-family neighborhoods, and they're sprinkled throughout, I think it's a measure of affordable housing. Um, condominiums are classified as multifamily residences and so are apartments, okay? So anything with more than two units on a parcel is called multifamily. We did not include the homeschool or the charter students, just the public school attending students in the analysis. From this, we come up with the SGR, the student generation rate. So what the student generation rate is, and you've gone from easements to EKGs to now school planning, so follow me here. We're looking at the type of student, so elementary, middle, high, and where they live, single, multi or mobile home versus the same number of units, right? So we're only looking at single-family students and single-family units, multifamily students, multifamily units. From that, we get a student generation number for single-family homes, multifamily homes and mobile homes at the elementary, middle and high level. So a really easy way to understand this would be, a student generation rate of .01 would mean if you had a thousand unit, single-family home subdivision going in, you'd expect 100 students out of that, okay? Yours are not that clean and simple.
Of course not.
But these are what we came up with for 2024. So again, we have it broken up, single-family, multifamily, mobile home, elementary, middle, high, and then the total amount, which is just that, all the single-family students, all the single-family units. We go to the next slide, you can see how that compares to 2021. The big takeaway, or sorry.
Very similar.
Very similar, yeah. The big takeaway, um, is that. The big takeaway is that your single family has really remained the same. So while you're seeing more units come in, you're seeing it producing the same amount of students. You're seeing an increase in the amount of students coming from your multifamily, so your condos and your apartments.
And again, that's a statistical ratio. And I was kind of glad to see the results come in, that what we have been doing is consistent with what the actual data says.
Yeah.
Haven't we kind of found that, that like projected numbers have come to fruition?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's. Can you clarify something for me just real quick? And you don't need to go back to the previous slide, but not that it's a big chunk of students, but when we talk about homeschool, as far as I Flagler, FLVS, kind of that virtual piece, I've always seen virtual very differently than I do homeschool, but that's me. Where does this fit in your numbers?
We looked at if they were actually, if they were attending a charter, they were removed. And if they were counted as, what is the homeschool code?
Yeah, I think it's ninety-nine, but anyway.
Ninety-nine.
We put, it has a numerical equivalent.
So like I Flagler, what would I Flagler be categorized as?
Is it in your counts?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah, they would be, that would be.
Anything within our system that we count is in, is in the number. Everything that is, you know, private or outside.
So I Flagler would be included in your counts, FLVS would likely not be included in your counts, because you are not responsible.
That's right.
Correct.
Directly, okay.
The data that we had for October twenty twenty-three included the I Flagler students,
not the Florida virtual students. They're kind of lumped in with that, not our, not our people right now.
Right.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Even if they come into the system later on, that's just, that just gets taken care of in future counts. We just use the data that was ours.
Thank you.
And so that is really the conclusion of the presentation. I tried to keep it quick. It's a wide-ranging topic. We can talk for hours about development trends and demographics and school planning. But I stopped it right here, because it is a lot of information, it's a lot to digest. But I wanted to open it up for discussion.
This is something that we're required by our interlocal agreement to do every year. And we did not do it for one reason or another for the last couple of years, so we're catching up. And we will present this again at the May board meeting for your approval, the actual board meeting, to adopt this generation rate. And then we'll present this to the oversight meeting and say, hey, our school board has adopted a new generation rate.
It's actually nice to see, because it's confirmation in many ways.
Oh, yeah.
We've heard so much pushback on the previous report. It's nice to see that the numbers are really coming in fairly close to what we were looking at originally. And I'm glad to see the modification of the multifamily rate, because that just makes sense to me. Typically, you think you're going to, you're going to see more children in, in the multifamily and the apartment complexes and whatnot. So, no, I think that was.
And they're expanding all over the county, we're starting to get more apartments.
Well, that's why I was curious when, I'm just thinking of Roberts Road in Flagler Beach.
Yeah, that's the end, I didn't want to go down that.
I mean, all over.
But we're seeing that all over. Bradford County just got a twenty-seven-hundred-unit application for multifamily. They don't have seven-hundred units in the county.
There's a lot more multifamily coming, it's in the pipeline that we're looking at, yeah. So the housing is changing.
Everywhere you go, you're seeing.
The housing is changing.
It's kind of, is it because people can't afford to buy homes, so they're renting instead?
I'd say that and it's, you know.
That and the mobility.
The, it's, it's, it's just that, it's the expense. And, you know, the, the development is happening further and further away from the major cities. So you're seeing it in the lake counties, in Claremont and that areas. You're seeing it in Bradford County. You're seeing it in Bay County, Panama City, where there's, you know, even if you take the thirty-five-hundred-unit Margaritaville unit complex off the board, there's still elementary schools with thousands of units planned.
Wow.
So you're seeing it all over Florida. Really, I mean, it's the rural counties, and it's, it's the large cities as well.
Yeah, I see it everywhere, it's crazy.
Yeah, this, this, this really supports our position with the impact fees that we just made prior to their arrival, because that was a challenge we were getting from the Home Builders Association, that it was not accurate.
Yeah.
That, that what Tischler-Weiss did was way off. We weren't going to get that many families.
Which is why it's nice to see that company.
And this is, this really certifies the fact that it was on target.
Right.
Plus, plus extra growth. So, I mean, that really helps, it helps with the ILA. It helps with the halfpenny's pitch that we just were able to secure. And it certainly supports the impact fees, because you need to put these children somewhere, somewhere. And we're going to be building, so that's, this is awesome.
Yeah, we were able to go back and look at when a development came in on when we were using the 2021 generation rate, what we thought that they would generate. And then go back a couple of years later, after that development is built out, and see what it truly generated. And it was astounding. In some cases, they, we were, they were way high, in other cases, they were low. And the average is basically the generation rate. But it's interesting to look at it that way, over a series of years, to see what actually generated.
Yeah, yeah. With hopes, with hopes in the future that they will understand that we're not pulling their legs. This is more accurate than what they've been providing. So hopefully, the ILA group will get that.
We presented this to the working group, and they were great with it. And then the next presentation, obviously, will be, after you finish with it, will be the ILA policy oversight.
Yeah, and that's the group really has to understand that we weren't kidding.
Yeah.
Very good.
Was the Davis demographic data part of this now, or is that?
That was a separate study that we did for basically forecasting. This was just a generation rate. It's a snapshot in time.
Takes what's being built, and we can apply, as the proportionate share agreements that I come, you know, dragging through here, we would apply this new rate to those once it's adopted.
Right, so we have a table that we track for all our developments. And so we will continue, for those developments that have already been approved, we will continue to use the 2021 rate on our table. And once you adopt this new rate, those developments coming forward will use the 2024 rate and whatever that generates.
Is there someone in the mix, I'm going to be random, that's fine. Is there someone in the mix who looks at kind of everything, like the baby, I'm going to get random, the baby boomers, right, like huge generation, right? And I don't think any subsequent generations have been quite as big. Like, is there someone in the mix who's looking at all of this from a, you know, whoever that generation is, who would be having the babies in the next five years? What are their numbers? Like, baby boomers are going to be, God love them, passing away? You know what I mean? Housing is going to be, I mean, this is such a complex, multifaceted.
It has many moving parts. We look at birth rates, we look at rooftops that are going up, we look at the utilities to support those developments, we look at the economy. It has several moving parts to it. And that's why it's not a percent of science, but you got to start with, you know, something that is statistically valid. And you just take that, and then you kind of do your best guess. But right now, we have, and we shared this information with the working group, and we shared it with you all. The, right now, there's a little over twenty-one thousand units, housing units, multifamily, single-family, in the pipeline over the next decade.
How many?
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand eight hundred. Now, all of.
For the county?
For Flagler County. Now, not all of those, I mean, just because they're kind of planned, doesn't mean that they will happen, because you have the economy, you have utilities, you have banks. I mean, you have all kinds of things going on. But if you look at what's in the pipeline, it's a little over twenty-one thousand. So there's plenty of business out there going on right now.
Well, I, I mean, I guess the question I think I always ask you, Dave, is just from a school board perspective, like, I suppose you will reach out to us when we need to have a discussion of new buildings, or planning, or whatnot. The one thing that I do hear from the, whether it's the development community or whatever, is you don't want to build a school that is needed one year, but is going to be empty the next. So I, as always, trust that you guys will reach out to this board when, when needed.
That discussion is really in our five-year work plan.
Yeah.
It, it maps out, you know, where we think we're going to need a new school. So, and we've said, our last, the board approved that in October, and we said it was, you know, six to seven years.
Twenty-nine to thirty, twenty-nine, thirty is where we feel like new high schools and middle schools are going to be needed.
But that can change every year.
But it changes on all these moving parts.
What happens.
What happens, you know, we could either, can move it to the left or move it to the right.
Because that's my understanding of the conflict, is you guys have this pot of money, it's just sitting there, like, like.
We wish.
Well, I'm just, you know, you, you mentioned.
That is what you hear.
You mentioned the conflict, right? There's a pot of money, it's just sitting there, and so why keep collecting? And the thing I'd like to point to is, like, the Matanzas expansion alone, I don't know what the dollar.
Twenty-three million.
Boom, for an expansion, right? So I think, I, I think it's, every time we bring this up, I just think it's good to kind of keep that in the air of like, we are anticipating one or more new schools needing to be built. They will be very costly, and we need to be ready.
At the last ILA working, or at the last ILA policy meeting, one of the board members from Bynell stood up and said, hey, where are you going to put the new high school? And he said, we want that discussed at the next meeting. So in June, we're going to have to have that discussion, so we'll be talking to you all before that happens. And, yeah, I mean, people are already beginning to ask, where's the next school going to go? But it's a ways out. It's not something we have to worry about tomorrow, but you need to start thinking about it.
But I think the, but I think the communicating it, right? Because if people aren't hearing you talking about it, right? So even if it's five years from now, or seven years from now, if I am hearing that there, like, I think sometimes people think you guys are not thinking about things, right? And I know very well you are, but if we're not kind of being transparent and talking about it, then it can lead people to think that you're not thinking about it, so.
I think about it every day.
That and many other things.
Okay, any more questions here? All right, thank you for that presentation.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, this is wonderful.
Appreciate it.
You don't need it?
No, it'll eventually reload here, I don't know why it would not pop up on my computer.
Fancy graphics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so now we're going to move to finance, and we have an update on the finance fishing situation.
And Ms. Wormick and Ms. Marianne Deising is going to come with Ms. Wormick, where you have asked for an update. And so the team is here to provide a brief update on where we are in that process.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Furry, Board Members, and Superintendent Moore. As the superintendent just mentioned, we are here to just provide an update as to where we are in this process. The district does continue to work through this process to try to recover as many funds as we can. And we are working through our local sheriff's office, the Secret Service, the bank, and our risk management team. So our financial processes and the finance world have been updated quite substantially to ensure that this does not happen again. We do recognize, as you all know, this is a very, very lengthy process that takes time to work through. There are many different factors involved in it that we are trying to work, to work through. But we are continuing to do that on a daily basis. Just for clarification for the board and for the public, I just want to mention that there was no breach on our end. So the data and the network is, is safe. Do you need me adding anything to that?
No, I think that was well stated.
Okay, thank you. So once we exhaust all of our options through this process, we will give a final update to the board and the public. And Mr. Deising and I will answer any questions that we can answer at this time.
I have a simple question, and it's not, it's with the process. So it's nothing to do with the actual, what happened and how it happened. If I were a vendor and I just billed you for a million dollars, okay? Talk to me about the process before this situation took place, and the revisions that have been made since, so it never happens again. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, but I'm concerned about the question, and here's why. I understand what, I think I understand where you're, what you're going.
I just want to know the difference, the changes.
How has it changed? But if we say how it's changed, don't we then just give the script to who could hack us in the future to know how we changed? Do you understand what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, perhaps.
So that would be a concern.
I mean, we keep hearing that there's been changes made, and it will never happen again.
But we couldn't publicly share that.
But as a board member, I mean, as individual board members, you definitely can sit with Mr. Deising and with Ms. Wormick and ask questions, get details. But right now, the, the purpose really is for us to say, this isn't gone away. We're not ignoring it, we're not sweeping it under the world. But it is a process that's going to take time. And right now, you know, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you look at it, it really is that you have to trust that we're working the different processes that we need to, to work in order to ensure that our system, our servers, all of those things are safe. And when we can publicly disclose, disclose everything that's happened, we will. But as a board member with the responsibility of oversight, you definitely can sit with, with Ms. Wormick and get specifics to your questions answered in a way that doesn't compromise us.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I think that's something that we should all be aware of, that what, why did it happen the first time? And what have we done to make sure it never happens again? And that's in process.
Sure.
That's in process.
I was just going to, to your point, Cheryl, I think it's critical for the public to know that internal investigations have been done. The Sheriff's Department, just like you said, is investigating. The special services are investigating. So everything is in process, but I would hate for us to get into the details of all of this publicly, especially if we're going to end up in litigation in the future.
Yeah, and Carrie and I are more than willing, like the superintendent just stated, we are more than willing on an individual basis to sit down and answer any questions that any of you have.
But I do appreciate the, at least the update for the public to know, just like you said, LaShaka, this has not fallen off anybody's radar. Nobody's trying to ignore it, but there, there's a process in place.
Can I just speak to that real quickly? Knowing that leadership can come and go, right? LaShaka, you may not be with us forever, Patty, you might not be with us forever. Is there anything, Mr. Delaney, this may be a question for you. Is there anything that we should do to set policy around this? Because when we keep talking about procedure, procedure can come and go.
No, I think that's a great question.
With any new people. So that, that would be the point that I wanted to bring into the mix. Like, whether.
That's you, that's you, brother.
Whether it's related to, like, because now we're talking about operations, so I don't know where we, but if we're talking about like max dollar amounts, or how funds are transferred, or what are those things should this board potentially entertain as far as setting it as policy?
Sure, I, I think it would be difficult to anticipate all the situations, because we know technology is going to evolve in the next five or ten years. How transactions occur, so it would be difficult to write a policy to anticipate all of those changes. Certainly, the board can write policies and job descriptions, making it clear who has responsibility for different aspects of financial security of transactions, and that might be worth looking at to, to make sure there's real clear channels of communication, lines of authority, lines of responsibility for staff. And there can be written procedures that are easier to evolve, but can also be really clear for training purposes, getting board members clear with what the process is. And that's something that could be looked at, and that's more nimble.
Can procedures be policy? Like, so as an example, I believe Superintendent Moore, what is it, a fifty thousand threshold?
Yeah, there is a cap.
Right, and that, is that or is that not policy?
That is policy.
That's policy.
That is policy. So I, I appreciate what you said, we can't anticipate everything, but you got some smart cookies over here. And I think we collectively could think of a lot of different things. That's just, not that we're going to go into it today, that's just something that I would encourage is to set policy.
I, I, I definitely agree that as we wrap this up, hopefully in the next coming months, that, that once the board has in its entirety everything, that I would hope that the board would look in and ask that question again. You know, is there something that we need to change to ensure that it doesn't happen again?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I am actually up. I am actually up next, Mr. Chair, and it, mine is pretty straightforward. We have provided to the board and to the public a document that outlines all of our end-of-year celebrations, promotion celebrations, as well as graduation. All of those dates are provided for you as a board, of course, those things will be added to your calendar for you to attend at your, as your pleasure, of course, with the understanding that graduation is our main event, and making sure that everyone has that graduation for Matanzas High School and Flag LePoncos on your calendar. So, that is there, it's provided, it's updated.
Nice.
And it has everything, it's been checked multiple times.
That is very helpful.
So, it's all there for you as a board.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
All right, with May 22nd being our grand event, and we got some feedback from our families as well as our staff around May 22nd, and really preserving that day for graduation for high school, so there are no other promotion ceremonies on that day.
Good.
We will provide, you know, some more details of logistics for that day, since it is a long day for, to get everybody there and all the things that will happen, but it's gonna be a great day, I look forward to it.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
May 22nd, so it's a Wednesday night?
May 22nd.
It's a Wednesday. It's a Wednesday for high school.
Wednesday.
It's not on Labor Day weekend anymore?
May 22nd.
Or Memorial Day weekend?
No.
I always get my weekends screwed up.
Yeah, mark your calendar.
Woo-hoo!
May 22nd.
Sweet.
Yep.
Okay, six points or two, code of student conduct, Mr. John Fennelly.
Yes, and board, Mr. Fennelly did indicate at his last presentation that he will be coming back to you, he has a timeline that's included in the presentation so that you can anticipate the next times that he will come back to give a presentation, so we're excited for the update.
Thank, thank you, Chairman Furry, School Board, Superintendent Moore. I am back for the next step of our, our revisions to student code and our timeline, so this is just an update of where we're at in the process. So, the next time I come before you will be at an agenda workshop where I actually be reviewing, and I'll be asking us to move forward with permission to advertise, and then it will advertise for two-month time span, because there's not 30 days from one board meeting to the next, so it'll be open from May to July for advertising. But I wanted to come and just give you a quick update on where we are at in the process. So, as you can see on slide three, we've now started the process of seeking feedback. It started with our academic leadership team, I presented to them all of the different ways that we were going to seek feedback in the meetings that, that I would be holding to discuss student code of conduct. I came to the information board workshop on March 26th to let you know the process was beginning, and we were gonna start acquiring feedback and, and getting information from all stakeholders. I then sent an email to our principals, assistant principals, and directors to, again, provide a link and share information around, this is now your time and opportunity to provide feedback to student code of conduct. They were also instructed to share that link at any community meetings that they may have, any stakeholder meetings, any student group meetings that they might have as well. I presented to the principals the opportunity to provide feedback, and again, provided them the link at the principals' meeting on April 4th. And then on April 10th, I met with the deans, and we started reviewing the feedback that had come in. So, what we do is, I gather all the input that the deans have, and that the deans have collected throughout the year from administrators, faculty and staff, parents, and we review all that and look at how we may incorporate some of those revisions into our revised student code, but we also go line by line through the feedback that we've received through the Google form that we put out. So, we read each one, we discuss it, we talk about how we could implement that, if there's a way to revise or incorporate that into our student code. So, we look at all of the stakeholder feedback, and as you can see on the, the next slide, we've received a lot of feedback already, so there have been 46 comments regarding feedback to student code of conduct. Forty-five percent of those were for faculty and staff members, 34% from parents, and then you can see from there, there was community member feedback, student feedback, and administrator feedback. So, we have gathered feedback at this point already, and we still have a long way to go from 46 stakeholders to include all groups of stakeholders in our community. On the next slide, you can see the breakdown, so we look at, are they providing feedback to the elementary code? Are they providing feedback to the secondary code? Or is it something that is relevant to both codes? So, you can see it's, it's pretty split all around. Moving on to the next slide, you can see the areas of focus, or the, the areas that we are receiving the most recommendations for feedback on. So, the big three areas, which they always are, are attendance, dress code, and discipline. So, those are kind of the areas where we, we often get a lot of feedback. Sometimes it's hard, cause we get contradictory feedback. We get some stakeholders that feel discipline should be stronger, or dress code should be more restrictive, and then we get contradictory feedback from others that say the exact opposite, like, you're, you're being too strict, or the, you know, the dress code needs to be loosened up. So, we work with the deans to, to reach a, a fair compromise, a fair middle ground on most items. On some things, we consider more or less a non-negotiable, and this is how we're gonna do business, then of course, we'll present that to you, and you guys have the final say and approval on that. So, some of the things that have come up for consideration thus far, so I can kinda keep you in the loop, and you'll see this again at the agenda workshop, we have language right now that after 10 minutes from when the bell, when class begins, if a student is not within, in their classroom within those 10 minutes, they are considered as skipping. We'd like to cut that number down to five, 10 minutes is too long. So, anything after five minutes, sometimes they're, they're tardy because they're in the bathroom and they just, you know, can't get to the class on time, but that five minutes gives them the leeway they need to get to the classroom. So, anything beyond five minutes would then be considered skipping that class, so we wanna cut that time down. Also, one that has been, that has come up repeatedly from a number of stakeholders is the removal of the footwear restrictions for middle school. So, they would like to see just an elementary dress code and a secondary dress code, and not put a separate, you know, stipulation in for middle school footwear. So, they, they are asking for that to be removed. We, we are looking to clarify the level three hit-strike code. We have to be careful with level three hit-strike, cause there's a level four simple battery code, and we have to make sure that we clearly delineate what needs to be reported to the state as a Cessor simple battery, and what can remain as a local hit-strike code. So, we're gonna look to clarify some of that language to kinda delineate between the two, to make sure that there's no confusion in that. We're also looking to either clarify or remove the language around pajamas, cause it's, it's hard sometimes for our deans to distinguish between what are pajama pants, which is really the issue, what's a pajama pants and what's regular just pants that are in style?
But I thought our, our dress code says.
So, our dress code says no pajama pants, and that's where the deans are having some issues of determining what is a pajama pants and what is just the style, because they have pockets, or they don't have pockets, or they have a zipper, or they don't have a zipper.
Maybe we should just go back to khakis.
So, so that's one where the deans have just asked for some direction on what's acceptable and what's not. What are pajama pants and what's not? So, I'm gonna work with them to, to help define and clarify that, and then I'll, I'll bring it, of course, to the board so that we can have conversation around, and you can provide me with direction on what you, you feel would be appropriate.
And I think the biggest thing, especially for our deans, like, it seems simple, right? When we're looking at it, but they, they wanna make sure that they have that clear direction, because, I mean, a few years ago, pajama pants typically did not have pockets. Now, you got pajama pants that do have pockets, you know, and so it, it seems simple, but our deans especially, they wanna be able to do their jobs within as much clarity as they can.
Sure.
And, that's, that's, that's exactly right. They just wanna all be clear on what the expectation is, so that they can equitably enforce it across the district. One of the things that they, they've asked to add, and this did come from our deans and admin at the school, is that we put an example of misconduct during a drill or a lockdown would be a level three misconduct. So, we're, we're looking to add that language in, because drills we take very serious, the safety and well-being of our students is, is a serious matter, and so anything that would deter from that during that drill or during that lockdown is a serious violation of student code and should be, at the consequence as such. So, the deans and admin were asking for that to be added into that definition as an example. Another thing that was brought up was removal of the planned fight code. Basically, we have three fight codes now. We have a level three fight, we have a planned fight, and then we have a level four Cessor fight. What they'd like to do is remove the planned fight code, and anybody that fights for any reason will get this consequence, and then the Cessor code, any student that fights for any reason will get that consequence. They don't wanna differentiate between a planned fight and a not a planned fight. A fight is a fight, and it will be disciplined as such. So, not that one would be disciplined harsher than the other, all fights will be disciplined the same. They are asking to add elementary code for minor theft offense, so we had it a few years ago, felt it wasn't necessary, and now they're asking to bring it back. So, those are things where a lot of times kids, you know, maybe take a bag of chips from another student at lunch. The code that we have now is a, a level three theft code, we don't have one for minor, for little things, a kid takes another kid's pencil or something like that, we don't have a minor theft code, so they would like to add that back in at the elementary level. At the secondary level, it's, it's a, it's either a level three offense or a state-reported We're looking at adding language prohibiting elementary students from using electronic devices on the bus, and this came specifically from transportation. They don't feel like our elementary students are using personal electronic devices in a reasonable manner, especially on the bus, and it's creating issues, so they're asking that for elementary runs, that devices be off and away for elementary students.
Can exceptions be made? My daughter, for the first time ever, is taking a, a school bus, and she's in the sixth grade. The, the volume on the bus is really hard for her. So, for her, having headset and listening to music is like a calming, so that, that one I'm a little bit torn about, cause I get it, cause, but you're potentially punishing, you know, it's that same old thing where you're punishing the students who are behaving correctly, right? Cause of the ones who are not behaving correctly. And I think, so.
I always thought it would help.
A distraction, yeah.
Like, I always thought that, that, that it would help mitigate.
So, the feedback from transportation was that at the secondary level, it does help, right? Because they're, they're either doing their homework, or they're, you know, listening to music. At the elementary level, they seem to think it creates more, more issues and more problems with, with kids, you know, taking pictures.
So, sixth grade would be middle school, right? So, we're talking through fifth grade.
This would be K-5.
I can see it both ways, for sure.
Yeah.
And, and remembering, especially even with the new cell phone policy within our schools, that if, if there is an individual student that is in need of something based on a plan that they have, we do work with those families and that student separately. And so, in the event that we did have a student that was in need of some.
Needed an accommodation of some kind.
Absolutely, we would, and we would work with that individual family.
Yeah, no, I mean, as long as that's communicate, I mean, again, when you put the information out to the parents, if maybe that could be mentioned with, whether it's this or any other ones, John?
And remembering, these are all just the considerations that are coming in right now, you as a board will have input put on all of this and make a final decision, so this is the consideration, but as a board, that may not be the route that you wanna go. And so, it's early on right now.
Yeah, I mean, I personally would like to trust, I mean, the people who are on those buses five days a week, I want to trust their input and what they think the needs are, but, so I like the idea is if we can communicate that out for any policy where an accommodation might be needed, just to make note of that, I think would be really good. That's my, that's my personal opinion, but.
So, so I took note of that, I think we just, that's how we, we craft it into the student code, we write the policy, is that any student that for, you know, who has the need for, you know, electronic device as per their IEP or whatever, be, you know, would be afforded that accommodation. So, I mean, we can, we can put it into the language of the student code of conduct, and we have that in there for electronic devices, that they can't be out during instructional time unless the teacher allows them to, or it's assistive technology because they're a diabetic or have some other issues. So, we can, we can, we can craft language in the student code of conduct to accommodate for those types of things.
Awesome.
I would probably just add to that, I mean, especially with the elementary students, their phones, they have access to everything, you know what I mean? And like, you take like Roblox, and there's a lot of crazy stuff that comes across there, and you have to constantly be watching it, so you just, you don't know, your child could be sitting next to another student with a phone, seeing something that you may not want them to see, so, yeah, just a lot of things to think about with that.
For sure. Another one, this one is in regards to attendance, there has been an ask to include some language that clarified that students have the ability to make up work while they're out of school suspended, and then just some clarification on what that looks like. So, for every day out, they get a day to make up that work, or just having a set policy around what that looks like for make-up work for out-of-school suspension. So, that is language that we're gonna look to build in, that says, you know, a, a week from the day of return, or one day for every day out to turn in that make-up work, cause we never want disciplinary consequences to have an impact on their academics, or we wanna mitigate that as much as possible. And then there was conversation, and this was brought up from the deans, again, around splitting defiance in our schools into a minor or major, and basically, the reasoning for that would be the consequences. So, not all defiance is the same. So, if they ask a kid to sit down, and he doesn't sit down, that's different than maybe a, a much larger, more egregious defiance offense. So, there's some conversation around it, that is one that, there's, there's definitely some differing opinions around whether everything is just defiance, or whether there should be a, a major or minor defiance. So, what I did say to our deans is whatever we recommend to the school board, we want to reach consensus on, so we're gonna work to reach consensus. And then, when I do bring to you a revised student code of conduct, I, I, my hopes are that I'll be able to say to you that we have reached consensus as a district, that everybody's in agreement, that this is a code that we all feel is the right code for 2425, and that we can enforce it district-wide. Any questions?
Great job. Yeah, so definitely, great job. I have one quick thing. As you were talking and sharing input that you're getting, it made me think of, and Colleen or Cheryl, one of you guys will know, there was a woman who was like the liaison, like the school liaison from either NAACP or the Democratic Black Caucus, and I haven't seen her lately.
I haven't seen her either around lately, I, I don't know, I know who, Espinola, Esp-
Spaniel.
Yes.
Yeah, I haven't seen her, have you, she been around?
What it, what I was thinking when you were talking about, are there organizations or individuals in the community who we should just, we should be reaching out to them, to give them, and, like, as a good community partner, to say, hey, we're, you know, would your organization like to review, you know, the code of conduct?
I know we don't specifically share it out, cause one thing I would hate to do is miss this group or that group when you start sharing it, but we do, we do advertise it everywhere we can possibly think of. So, it's on all of our social media pages, the link, it's on our district webpage, the link, our admin at the schools are, are sharing it at SAC and PTO meetings and, and all of it. We want everybody that wants to provide impact, or provide input into this to have the opportunity to do so. We've never sent it out to individual groups, because I would hate to, to miss a group or, or, you know, feel like we're. Yeah, selecting one group over another or anything like that, but we do want it to be advertised and put out so that everybody in the community has input. And we are getting a, a wide variety of, of input from all stakeholders in the community. But yes, if there's, if there are any people that you're aware of that would like to provide any stakeholders, please share with them that Google form link, and, you know, we, we will take, and we go through and read every bit of feedback with the deans, and we talk about what it means and whether or not it's something that we could incorporate into the revisions.
I assume this is posted on the Facebook page.
Yes.
Or has been.
Yes.
So, if I'm a liaison for education, I assume I would be following the Facebook page.
It's on our website as well.
So.
Yep, and it was posted on our Facebook page, I, I wanna say, a few days back, and I know I've shared the link, and I know it's been shared out several times over, so.
And Don's gonna be sharing it on a weekly basis, so that, you know, people will see it each, each week.
Awesome.
So, ju- just on the, the minor theft and the defiance.
So just on the minor theft and the defiance, these requests for some changes and clarification, are we seeing upticks in these areas, or is it in these offenses? Or is it just that they want to, it's the same, but they want better clarification?
So the minor theft came from our elementary school deans, because there isn't a code that specifically addresses that. So whenever they're seeing things that occur, like a kid takes another kid's pencil, or takes a bag of chips or something, and we don't have a clear code to put that into, then they have to look at which one most appropriately fits that. And we don't ever want to do that. We want to be able to code it for what it is. So the elementary deans felt that there was a need for a code for minor theft, and they didn't want to code it as a major theft issue, because then it would really be coding it as something that really didn't fit. In regards to defiance, yes, we do see the need for delineation in the defiance code, because we are seeing defiance from students. I don't know if it's more than we've seen before, but it's definitely there, and we want to make sure that we are disciplining for it and providing consequences and education around how to follow our rules and listen to the adults on campus.
Any other questions?
Thanks, John.
All right. Thank you very much, Stefano. Okay. So that leads us now to 12.01, public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
No, we do not.
Oh, wait.
I want to go to Josephine. I'm going to sign up.
Oh, wait, this, okay, we have the public comment discussion. Okay, gotcha.
The 12.01 is public comment.
So make sure we got that.
Yes.
Can I say something off the record?
Well, it's all on the record. We're on camera.
I'm old school. I love you guys. I'm old school. You guys should be in command of what you're doing. They should be in code of ethics. You don't follow the... So I get an eighty. Shoot, you don't shoot, you get shot, okay? They should, you come in in September, you have a code of ethics. Sign that. And guess who's responsible? The parents. You're going to be a win-win. Trust me. It's not about the kids all the time. Mom and pop are in charge. You guys are doing a beautiful job. Don't get me wrong. But they gotta follow the rules too. That's what I'm saying to you. I'm old school. I can't help it. I'm for the brats. What can I say?
Any other comments? Okay, so we'll move on from public comment, and we will go to board member requests. Any board member requests?
I have one. I brought this idea up a while ago, and I meant to mention this too, but I think I mentioned it before. Could we explore or look at the possibility of either finding out whether it's even allowed to look at education ways, some of the property over at Education Way, to develop like an RV park for income, revenue generation, that would be a direct donation to the Ed Foundation for teacher grants? I know there's, is it the Lions Club or Kiwanis? Somebody...
Kiwanis has a lot, a storage yacht.
Yeah, somebody has a storage facility, and it generates a significant amount of money for them. And we've got property just sitting over in Education Way. I don't know what it would cost to, you know, put a lot down and...
Like for storage?
Yeah, no, 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 just storage.
Park your RV, your trailer.
Correct. Replicate kind of what Kiwanis is doing.
Come on up.
As a...
I can give you a little bit of insight on that piece of property. That property is about a little over 100 acres, and we did a mitigation study for wetlands. And about half of it is, over half of it is wetlands. So there would have to be...
That means half of it is not wet.
It wouldn't, but you should see, the diagram is, it's just all over the place. So, I mean, there would be some wetland mitigation in that.
How many acres are cleared right now, the hundred that we're utilizing?
Well, I don't know that number.
We can bring this information back to you.
Yeah, I'm just curious if there's a way, because I know they make significant money.
Well, I mean, whether it's, we have other property too.
Right.
But so maybe not that location, but maybe that location.
Yeah.
I think if we could generate some revenue off land that's just sitting there, that would be bad. We just have to look at also, though, the, you know, clearing land is very expensive, so, you know, if we had land that was already cleared, you know...
And I'm sure there's a liability question there, too. I just, just to throw the conversation out there.
It's a possibility. I just, you know, I always worry about getting into these type of enterprises. It's almost like it might be better to, if we had land, if we saw somebody who had that business plan to lease, be a landlord, and let them just collect rent, you know?
I was thinking, let the Ed Foundation do it.
Or let the Ed Foundation do it, or having somebody outside...
I mentioned it to Teresa, and Teresa was like, yeah, that'd be great.
Well, I'm open to that conversation, you know, personally.
But, yeah, I don't think we get into the business of managing it.
Right.
But give that to the Ed Foundation if all those dollars are going directly to...
Yeah, because Kiwanis, they have a template, that they might, you know, they've been successful with that for years, so...
We'll look.
All right.
Just curious.
Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, any other board member requests? Okay. Yes.
Thinking, we're going to talk tomorrow, so I'm like, do I bring stuff up now? I just, we talked about it last time, but just, and we'll talk tomorrow, but I kind of just want to know more about those students that are on the edges of the county, and, you know, the transportation, I want to know more about, and is there an agreement? We can come up with Fallujah County for kids who are not nearby, but, you know, we could talk about that.
Mr. Freeman does have an upcoming meeting with Fallujah County to have some beginning conversations about that, and we'll provide, after that meeting, we'll provide an update support.
All right, so...
We are thinking about it and working on it for those ones that are out in those outlines.
Okay, so we'll move on from board member requests and public comment discussion. So we decided to bring this back to kind of discuss that format, and see if there's any desire to make any changes in that area.
Well, if I may, aside from Chanel bringing this up multiple times, there have been lots of business meetings for me, where someone will bring something up in public comment at the end of the night, and I wish that I would have heard it before, at the time we were calling it, oh, new business and old business. But I kind of wish that I had heard it before new business, because it's something that I would have maybe wanted to then discuss as part of the proper board meeting. So I think my ask would be, if it is possible, at least for it to be moved up in front of board member requests.
Well, just for clarity, right now, we have, for our business meeting, I think this focuses around our evening meeting, because right now, it's free and open to any topic. So really, I think the ask is, from those who've come to comment, is if we would allow public comment...
At the very beginning.
At the beginning, in some way, shape, or form, to any topic off agenda, right?
Right.
And so the concern has been, at least I've brought this forward, is that, you know, we have business to get done, and if there's a lot of non-agenda item public comment, we could be doing our, getting our business done at 11:00 midnight, you know? And so the question is, is if we were to allow, what would that look like if we allow it at all? I think that's where we should focus our thoughts on this.
Can we just do, like, agree on a time limit? Because, yes, I agree, it should not be something that could go on for hours.
Yeah, I like that idea. If I can just play devil's advocate, and for anybody listening, I support here, like, having our students highlighted, you know, all of the different highlights that we do at the beginning, all of the proclamations that we do. I think they're really important. With that being said, if I'm a community member, and I'm like, you guys can make sometimes 45 minutes for those things, and you can't make any time for me to not have to wait two hours to make public comment, I do believe that these schools are the community's schools. And so I, but I understand your point, Chair, for, you know, we wouldn't want somebody to, for us to have, you know, have three hours. But I would like to maybe have a specific amount of time.
Well, I had given it some thought, and, you know, I could see some value. The issue I have is, I mean, everybody should be heard, and again, we go back to, we need to get our business done that night, and we have other avenues for the public to contact us, but, you know, but there is something special about coming to a board meeting, saying, standing in front of us and making your point and hearing it. A lot of times, what I've witnessed is that when it's, when there's a hot topic, a hot topic item, that is when this can really get carried away in the sense of time, right? Not in the passion of their concern. But the, and some of the comments can be a little bit repetitive on those issues. So my thought was, if we were to make a compromise there, that if we opened up a 15-minute window, because a lot of times, those that want to, it's two or three people, right? I've seen it on most cases, unless there's something really big out there going on. But then we, but if there's more, we split that 15 minutes up, down to, down to as little as one minute per, so 15 speakers potentially upfront, within that 15-minute window. So that's just one idea, because I think normally, from what I have witnessed, just looking out into the, to the chamber, the, it's two or three that have off-agenda things to say on a regular basis. So what do you guys think?
I think 15 minutes is reasonable.
So it would be an unlimited amount of time for anything on the agenda?
Right.
But it would be a 15-minute cap?
Just for...
At the beginning.
At the beginning, so before...
Then they would be unlimited, or they're three minutes.
So we would do the, I view this, that we would open it up first to the 15 minutes of non-agenda items, and then, and then after that, we'd go to regular public comment on agenda items, right? And then it's opened up again at the end, if more people want to stay. I mean, listen, if they want, if afterwards, I'll stay till 3:00 in the morning, if that's what it takes. I mean, I don't prefer to be there till that morning, but we want to get everybody heard. But we have to get our business done, and it's not healthy for us as a board to be doing our business and making serious voting decisions at 11:00 midnight, you know? And that's the reason why. So what are all your thoughts? That's just one potential model, so, yes.
I think the idea that we're limiting freedom of speech is not accurate. I think we have plenty of opportunities for people to share and speak. And if you know that at the beginning of the meeting, there's proclamations, and there's, so come later. Come an hour later. I think it's a business meeting, it's a, there is a reason for the business meeting. I think if you have comments on agenda items at the beginning of the meeting, that is appropriate. And then you, if, basically, at the end of the meeting, like we have it now, whatever you want to bring forward, bring forward. I'm not necessarily opposed to 15 minutes, but I think if you limit it to a minute, that is going to create havoc.
Well, it would only be a handful of people. I was just saying, in the event that there was a lot of people...
That there were 15 people.
But I just thought, in most cases, it wouldn't be that many people. Yes, I agree, one minute is not a lot of time, but they still have the opportunity to come back at the end to say anything they want, just like you mentioned. But it, so again, I honestly prefer the model that we have right now. I'll be honest with you.
I do, too. Honestly, we're only hearing from one or two people that this is an issue.
Right.
And they get to speak it.
All the time.
But can I, can I just, real quick, I think about the family we heard from just this last meeting, and they would have stayed all night, because they loved their son and grandson. I'm going to start crying over it. But it's the family who wanted to talk about kindergarten and the age and whatnot. And they, and they love their kid, and they just, they wanted to come and speak before the board. It was obviously not on the agenda. If it's 10 minutes, if it's 15 minutes, I just, I would love for that family to have been able to come in with their son and their grandson, and say what they wanted to say, and have the ability to get home, feed everybody, and whatnot.
You know, here, yeah, I totally hear what you're saying. I think, you know, on the flip side, if you think about it, because we now workshop all of our actual business meetings, right? A lot of the time, to ask questions, to debate an issue, whatever, we do that. I mean, I feel like everybody here does, we flesh things out in our workshops, so that when you get to the board meeting, you're dealing with business, and you're at public comment. I mean, I don't feel like our board meetings are so long. I mean, typically, we're done by eight, eight-thirty.
Our workshops really lend to that, because we invest a lot of time...
We do the pre-work.
Here, so that we pretty much have it down, unless new information comes around, we kind of know where we're going, and a lot of it's consent anyways, and the consent moves pretty quickly. And with the rare occasion we have an action item, we have discussion, but a lot of times it's not...
It's not a lot.
Well, I will, I will just ask this. It goes by, I would argue, a little faster for us, because we're sitting up there and we're engaged, right? Like, it's all relevant to us, because we are five elected board members. For that family who's sitting there for an hour and a half, waiting to say there are three minutes that they want to say, I respect your point, but we have a different lens in that room than what they do. They're sitting there patiently waiting. So, you know, the thing is, too, to keep in mind, this is, I want to say two things. One, this is, we might have meetings where this just doesn't apply, there's not a single person who would sign up for this time period, right? There might be a meeting where one or two, right? The other thing that I wanted to mention is, it's gone. It might come, it might come back.
Even with my own, I just threw this out here for conversation, right? Because to see, because this could become problematic in itself, because if we had 100 people in the room, and then you tell them only 15 are going to speak, you're going to have a room full of very upset people.
And I think that's, I think that's like the very, maybe never or rare, I remembered what I was going to say.
Oh, my God, I hope you're right, but it was, it was not rare for a time period.
But listen, there were some contentious things that had, we...
A tad, yeah.
Hopefully, I'm hoping we're on the other side of some of, a lot of those things. The other thing I just wanted to mention that we've also heard from people is, you are penalizing the people who play by the rules. So there have been business meetings where people say, I'm going to talk about this topic that is on the agenda, but then when they get up there, they are in fact talking about whatever they want to talk about, right? So I, I, again, if it's 10 minutes, if it's whatever it is, I, and I am willing to accept if I'm the minority here, absolutely. I just, I think the meetings can get very long.
I'm kind of with you, but I, yeah, but I also think about, what if 50 people show up to, you know?
Yeah, how do you deal with that? You know, I mean, and then, but they're also, there's the, you know, you have, most of the time, at least of where I've witnessed, is that when it is a lot of commenters, it oftentimes is on the agenda, right? So it's almost like, it's usually when it's on the agenda, when it's going to be voted on, when people want to, they want us to hear before we cast our vote what their feelings are, so that oftentimes, those things, we're there until they're done anyways, before we make our vote, because it's an agenda item anyways. So I'm just trying to say, it hasn't, I agree with that, we do a lot of advanced work to make sure that our business meetings move efficiently through, and I think we've proven that, that's how it's been historically, so...
Listen, I did just, I just had a thought that I think I'm maybe understanding a bit better where you guys are coming from, and I'm just, I'm going to use specifics. When it came to, like, the cell phone tower, right? Like, I get it. Like, we, there are people who are going to be very passionate about certain things, and we can't always just keep putting that on the agenda, and, so I think I'm understanding better, thinking about, like, specific scenarios.
And Chair, can I just, just make a comment, too? I think, when I think about this board and the staff that we have working for the district, especially, you know, our senior-level staff member, this board and the staff, we are very accessible to our community, our families, to community members, whomever. So when you think about the individuals, too, that are coming before, and with a public comment that is not on the agenda items, that is not the only way, as Chair has stated, that they can get action done. That may be a way, right, to make sure that it is public and everyone knows... That may be a way, right, to make sure that it is public and everyone knows, but, you're going to respond, the chair's going to respond, the board's going to respond, I'm going to respond to any one of our community members who comes. And so, it's not like some places where they only have access to their school board members and their district staff by coming to a board meeting. So, if you send, if that parent has sent that email to us, we probably would have responded to that parent, and the parent had not, did not need to sit through that meeting in order to do that. However, they still can, so that the public can hear the conversation. So, I think you also have to consider accessibility that this board and our district staff has to our community as we are making the decision.
Can you, to that point, I'm not trying to be cheesy here, but whether it's signage, whether it's whatever, because when I, again, when I think about that family, the multi-generational family, ultimately, what we all did was, you need to speak with superintendent, you know what I mean? Superintendent Moore. So, I'm flexible, like, if there's any creative solutions, like signing that, you know, lists contact information, or, you know, if you don't have the availability to stay for a prolonged, like, this, if you email here, this person will reach out to you within 72 hours, like, so, I'm open to, I just want to make sure we are listening to the community and supporting them, but I understand that businesses...
And I see that, you know, I mean, and staff responds very quickly. I mean, they do, and they monitor, they know that that's their role, and they jump right in and find resolution. So, I really do believe that if somebody's emailing it, it's getting responded to, and it's getting addressed.
I have no doubt.
And, so, but again, we do have five public opportunities a month, because we have two opportunities at each workshop, and then at the end of the business meeting, to come and talk about everything, anything and everything you want to talk about. And so, I don't think it's unreasonable that all that work that we do here, to make that meeting go faster, so that we can get the public comment on anything, should be delayed, because we're going to move right through and get the public comment as quickly as possible. That's my overall feeling, that the system we have right now is working, and we really have not seen a lot of demand for that upfront, any issue. So, again, my, after we've talked this out here, my personal view is that I think we should leave it the same as we have it. Because I really, I just think, how am I, how am I going to tell, any chair is going to tell, you know, when you got a...
Number 16, you can't speak.
Yeah, you can't speak, and, and, so, it's just not, I just think we're setting this up for potential even problems within the chamber, so...
No, I'm, I'm, listen, I really appreciate the conversation, I think it was a really good conversation, I just, and I would feel good if Chanel came back and said, you know, about it, I feel good, like, we, it has very much been discussed, and I appreciate her for continuing to bring it to us.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not limiting public speaking, we're not, because we do more than we're required to do by having the five meetings, the five for open conversation.
That's right.
You don't have to do that, we have to have one.
And I also just...
You know, so, and that's important. And the other thing is, too, and we spoke about this before, and I can go either way, I really can, I mean, I'm going to, and I think we all can.
I was just going to say that.
I think we all can go either way.
It's really up to you guys, because we're not going to be here, you're going to be living with it, so, I mean, I would support whatever you want.
Get your business done, get your business done, and when there is, when there are flare-ups, you're still going to get your business done, and then you can address your flare-ups, which makes sense. You know, it's not that we're being, we give our families more than enough time to speak, you know, and I'm glad we do, and we listen. But, get your business done, because that's important, and then, stay till the cows come home, okay, if you have to, to address those issues.
And I'm open to either way as well, but I also do tell people, like, you have my cell phone number, you can talk to me, you know? Like, we are accessible, so, I don't feel like it's a matter of not being able to reach us, you know?
Is there a, and I understand, we all have emails, we, I get it, but, the new communication channel, whether it's Google Forms or whatever, is there, is there like any kind of a dropdown, like this is pertaining to, like, let me get to my point. Is there a way for someone to, if they don't want to email us, to say this is related to a school board, and you guys would communicate that out to us?
They could put whatever it is that they want to put in there, and it's directed. If someone goes in and they want to send it directly to me, it's going to come to me.
Yeah.
If they don't put my email address in, or...
So, if someone says, "I would like for the all school board members to be aware of XYZ," your team will communicate that out to us.
Absolutely.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for the conversation.
No, it's good.
Okay, and so, was this on the evening agenda at all? It was just for discussion today?
Yeah, it was for discussion. Safety is on next month's discussion. We didn't, we didn't know how our time was going to be, so we're going to talk about safety, that was a request of the board, to talk about coverage for these meetings through law enforcement. So, we'll have that discussion in the next one.
All right, so, we will move on to closing comments. Any closing comments?
I'll wait till later.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, everybody good? All right, this meeting is adjourned.